Well, thank you all so much for joining the April 6th Louisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking the raised hand button at the bottom of their screen. Attendees that have called in by phone can dial *9, and we'll see a raised hand on our side on your behalf. When I acknowledge the member of the public and the city clerk unmuted, please tell us your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on a different topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk mute, could we please have a roll call?
Um, Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahey?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Lipton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lay?
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Is there any discussion of the motion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries. That takes us to public comments this evening on items that are not on our agenda or items that appear on our consent agenda. So if you have public comments this evening for items that are not on our regularly scheduled agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand at this time. And let us know what you'd like to tell us. I'll call people out, and then just a reminder, please tell us your name, and then your address, and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. The first commenter this evening is Brad Walker. Brad?
Good mu- good evening. Can every- can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, members of the board. My name is Brad Walker, and I live in Superior, Colorado. I wanted to provide some comments about some misinformation that is being spread concerning the Rocky Mountain Metro Airport. In particular, my comments are addressed to, uh, whoops. In particular, my comments are addressed to Jeff Lipton. As you are aware, Mr. Lipton is representative from Louisville to the Airport Community Noise Roundtable. At the previous meeting in the Noise Roundtable, Mr. Lipton presented a map that supposedly shows flight paths of airplanes. The graphic shown is nothing more than political stunt. I will grant you, the graphic supposedly shows much traffic over Superior in Louisville, but there is so much context left out as to render the graphic worthless. It doesn't show dates when the data was collected, thereby making the airplane traffic look worse than it might actually be. In addition, the graph doesn't show any altitudes for the planes. Any rational person would know that a plane flying at 3,000 feet would be perceived as quieter than a plane at 1,000 feet. A plane overhead at thousands of feet does not equate with the noise level that is actionable. Lastly, this data has no source noted. This is not data that can be used by the FAA for any kind of noise and determination. I noticed the recent mayor town hall, this graphic was also bandied about as if it shows some type of impact on Louisville. Fortunately, people recognize the graphic as nothing more than political pandering, and really shows the lack of fundamental understanding of the aviation issue as it relates to Rocky Mountain Metro Airport. Your constituents would be better represented by someone who is more educated about the issue and wants to work cooperatively on the airport noise issue. Thank you for your time. You folks have a good evening. Respectfully, Brad Walker.
Thank you. The next commenter this evening is Andy Clark. Andy?
Hello. Thank you for letting me join the call tonight. Mayor, I have a question for you. When we were having a similar discussion about Main Street closure in the fall, whether to extend it or not, there were, I counted hundreds of individual residential emails and phone calls that voiced opinion to keeping the streets closed. And I counted nine people, and I could be wrong, and please correct me if so, that wanted to see the street opened up again. So, um, you know, more feedback than a question, I suppose, but I felt very, very frustrated as a resident and as a business owner that our input was not taken under consideration. And I'm curious, uh, if, you know, are there decisions that maybe residents and business folks should not weigh in on because there's already decisions that have been made? And if so, could that be couched and positioned in such a way prior to asking for feedback? Thank you for letting me speak my mind.
Thank you. So that's all the items on items that are not on the agenda this evening, and as they're not on the agenda, council doesn't comment on them. So that takes us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone, the consent agenda.
They just, I just want to say that they can't.
I'm sorry, um, could we have the city clerk mute, Mr. Clark? Thank you. And that takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on the agenda. Um, so I thank everyone who attended the town hall and, um, you know, it's so far, so good. It was posted online, and other folks can watch it and send emails and comment and call me if they have any questions or comments about the town hall. I just want to take a moment to address a very awful tragedy in our community. The city council and myself are more than saddened by the tragedy that occurred at King Supers on March 22nd in Boulder. The senseless act of violence has had a tremendous impact on our community members and staff, and left many wondering what actions might be taken to prevent such events from being repeated. City council is in close contact with our state legislators and representatives who are committed to taking action on this issue. Our council and staff will closely track the state action on the matter and determine the best way that we can engage and make an impact on gun regulation moving forward. The city urges residents who are interested in this matter to contact your state representatives who are dealing with the matter. We're happy to provide you their contact information, and you can find it all on the state's website. Our local representatives, our state Senator Sonia Wacas Lewis, and State Representative Tracy Burnett, and they're both very actively engaged on addressing the issue. I also want to let everyone know that the city manager and I attended a meeting today with the public health directors from around the Denver metro region. While there is much to be hopeful for, we're not out of the woods yet with respect to COVID-19. The end is near, but you don't win the race until you've crossed the finish line. The health directors are reporting that we are seeing an increase in cases, but the good news is that hospitalizations are under control and that more and more people continue to be vaccinated each day. So as there's changing information in the coming weeks, we just ask that community members listen closely to their local health agencies. It looks like regulations will be pushed down to the local county level. And so you'll be hearing from our health agency that we really need everybody to get their vaccines if they can, and to keep wearing face coverings for the meantime, so that we can get everybody vaccinated then well. Please ask county health for help if you're having trouble signing up for your vaccine. And if we all keep doing our part, then we can cross the finish line together. So thank you, everybody, for what you've done in the last year, and we just need to do it a bit more together. Are there any other council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on our agenda? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Can you hear me, Mayor? Okay, great. Um, so just similar to your comments due to spring break, this is our first council meeting since the tragedy occurred at the King Supers in Boulder on March 22nd. I'd like to express my deepest condolences on behalf of the city to all those affected by this event. Uh, and as we struggle in the wake of this loss, I'd like to remind everyone to take care of each other and yourselves. There are a number of resources available for those in need, and those can be found on the Louisville website at louisvilleco.gov/resources. So, and obviously Boulder County Public Health and the county have a number of resources as well. So just, please, everybody, please take care of each other in this time. And then I wanted to hand it over briefly to Chris Lay. He was just going to give a quick update on the EDI task force and what work is going on there, as well as Kyle Brown may want to join into.
Councilmember Lay?
Thanks, uh, City Manager Balser. Um, yeah, some folks have been asking a little bit about what, what the plan is in terms of the task force on racial equity that we've been talking about for some time, and, um, where that process is, is that we have, where the city has retained, um, a wonderful consultant who I've had a chance to chat with briefly, and I think he's going to do a wonderful job for us. But, um, we're going to, Kyle Brown and I, Councilmember Brown and I, are going to meet with him and staff tomorrow to talk a little bit more about the, uh, the process and also the 55 applications that we have for spots on that task force. Louisville, I forget sometimes, uh, is an embarrassment of riches in terms of our residents stepping up to serve and the folks who are or have submitted their applications are really no exception to that. There's 55. Um, we have invited some people to apply who aren't from Louisville. That's part of our mission to try to get some information relating to issues about how others perceive us. But, uh, just a great group of people that we will have to choose from. And, um, the, um, the small group, working group, I guess I would call it, is going to come back to council with some, with some recommendations ultimately, but there'll be about 15 that those, that 50, group of 55 will be narrowed down to, to 15 that will interview. And from that, probably select 11 folks, and they'll likely get underway in May after the council weighs in on those candidates. So it's moving apace and really excited about the prospect of tackling what I think is one of the most important set of complicated problems of our time. And I'm really proud of the residents. I'm proud of council, but I'm proud of the residents. I'm proud of staff. Proud of all those who've, who've thrown their hats in the ring to, to be a part of this. And I hope that all of you will be keeping, um, tabs on the meetings, which will be public, and follow the activities as, as they go forward toward their completion probably later in the year. So that's, um, that's important.
Thank you. City Manager Balser, did you have anything else?
I just wanted to add consistent again with your comments as well, Mayor, that will, as changes to the dial and what the county decides to do mid-April, in response to that, we'll continue to communicate and get that information out to residents and businesses. There'll be lots of communications as, as we're all trying to understand what that looks like in an effort to be responsive to changes. So just wanted to say that, and thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you very much. That takes us to our first item of regular business resolution, 26 Series 2021, or a resolution approving the temporary closure of portions of Main Street and downtown Louisville for outdoor dining areas. We'll have a staff presentation from our Economic Vitality Director, and then we'll take public comment where people will have three minutes to tell us what they'd like to tell us, and then we'll go to council discussion and action. So our Economic Vitality Director, Megan Pierce, will give us a presentation at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Uh, thank you. I have a brief presentation tonight that really summarizes the work over the last several months to bring forward plans for outdoor dining for 2021. Uh, what, what will ultimately be summarized here tonight is the Economic Vitality Committee's recommendation, which was voted on in March to implement a temporary closure of Main Street in order to provide for expanded outdoor dining options. Just a bit of history here. So in, in 2020, in response to the pandemic and the significant economic impacts and restrictions, the city did, the city council approved in May of last year a temporary closure of Main Street done block by block so that we kept the east-west streets open to vehicular traffic. Uh, the scope of the closure was from Walnut to Elm Street. It began on June 10th and was originally approved just until the fall, but then was extended a couple times. So ultimately remained in place until December 4th. Since that time, we've had sort of a winter dining program in operation for select businesses that wanted to participate. So we're just using the on-street parking spaces on Main Street currently. So 2021 proposal, this, as mentioned, comes out of work from the Economic Vitality Committee, as well as input from the Downtown Business Association, um, starting in February. It, at that meeting in February, um, there was, there was direction and support for the temporary closure, but there was direction to staff that, you know, more work needed to be done and information provided to really facilitate that decision-making process and ultimately what's being brought forward for council tonight. Given the potential significance of a temporary closure of this amount of right-of-way, it does require council approval. In February, what staff was asked to pursue was a closure that would begin between late April and last through early November. Focus was to be put on coordinating with public safety, especially the Louisville Fire Protection District. And new coordination required this year versus 2020 because of special events that anticipate taking place that would normally temporarily close Front Street. We had already done engagement and input with RTD, but continuing to have those conversations as needed. And then there was a great deal of emphasis put on additional engagement to be conducted with residents, downtown businesses, and downtown restaurants as, as individual stakeholder groups. Uh, so the closure plan before council tonight, there is a map in the materials. It is, it is generally the same scope as 2020. What I would call your attention to that, that is the most significant change in terms of setup is the emergency access lane that would be put on each block of the closure. This would be for emergency vehicles only, so pedestrian traffic can certainly travel through there between seating areas or down the block. But it would not be for buses. It would not be for regular vehicles. So there would be barricades at each intersection that would be able to be easily moved by public safety should they need access to the street. And the closure would be mostly, the lane closure or the lane access would mostly be 14 feet. There are a few feet I've indicated on the map where it could possibly be limited to 10 feet because the fire district has access to buildings from other areas that they wouldn't necessarily need that access lane. In addition, related to those special events, staff and, and fire district have coordinated with those events that are still planning to host events that would involve front street closures. And both of those groups, street fair and farmer's market, are, are willing to provide emergency access and incorporating that into their plans that would be permitted by the city. Touching on the engagement piece and the work done in that area, so given that there were various stakeholder perspectives, we did launch three separate surveys. On March 1st, all the surveys were, were open through March 15th. So we got approximately two weeks of input. The resident survey was hosted through the Engage Louisville website, though we did send out a direct postcard mailer to residents immediately in the area of the closure, and that postcard directed them to the survey link to share their input. The survey link was also shared through the city's communication channels. Uh, the survey of downtown businesses and downtown restaurants was separate, and I conducted those surveys to gather that input. Uh, so we had 1,300, over 1,300 responses to the resident survey in that time, 17 downtown restaurant responses, and 34 downtown business responses. And, um, I'm, I'm not going to go through it in detail here, but there is more detail in the packet for those that are watching or listening in specifying the outcomes of each of the survey questions. Um, just broadly, the majority, all three surveys indicates support for the Main Street closure temporarily for the 2021 season. But I do think it's important to recognize and call attention to the fact that there are, there are stakeholders in each of those three groups that do not support the closure. So there are businesses and, and a restaurant within the closure area that do not support the temporary closure. Um, and, and I think from, from comments in the survey questions, the, the primary reason for that is that they don't believe it's a benefit to their businesses, and it also creates issues for their customer parking and patrons accessing their businesses. In terms of the resident survey, there is also, there is also a group of residents that does not support another temporary closure this year. The primary concerns that were cited were related to parking and the detour of the Dash Bus. That detour route goes from Short Street, Short Street to Lafarge in the case of a Main Street closure. There were other comments, of course, with the resident survey, just some, to add some additional context. People who were not in support of the closure also touched on feeling about the fairness of the closure to other businesses as well as the likely loosening of restrictions that we're expecting to see over the summer. Uh, for, for council's awareness, if, if a temporary closure plan is not approved for Main Street, staff can be prepared to accommodate outdoor dining requests, much in the manner that's familiar to Louisville with our downtown annual patio program. I would anticipate that we have higher demand for outdoor dining than we have in the past. So there were many parties, there were a number of participants last year in the closure area that are not regular patio program participants. The city also has a limited number of those patios. So if we did do a patio program limited to the on-street parking spaces, I envisioned we would use a combination of those patios as well as the Jersey barriers that are currently deployed in order to create the, the seating areas desired. Um, I made a brief note that, that if there also is a desire that the temporary closure plan has a shortened time horizon from what's recommended by the Economic Vitality Committee, it is, is feasible for staff to make that change, I think, with some notice and, and probably about a three-day transition. That change could certainly be made. Uh, as noted at the beginning, ultimately, the, the recommendation of the Economic Vitality Committee was to recommend a temporary closure of Main Street from April 26th through November 1st. Their guidance to staff was that, um, to accommodate the emergency access that's required in order for the, the city to have support for its closure plan, but to design the street layout in a way that could benefit as many businesses as possible. Uh, the direction we received is if this should go forward, we should provide the program at no cost to participants, which is consistent with 2020 programming. And, um, just lastly, should council wish to proceed with the recommendation, we provided a resolution that would approve the right-of-way closure. That's all I have in terms of my comments for this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Pierce. And so I want to note for the record that we've added an addendum, and it's posted on the website with some comments we've received. And just take a moment, um, to reflect on the comments earlier in the meeting. You know, we really do value public comment. I personally greatly benefit from public comment on all the different topics we receive. And the topic last fall, and again tonight, is no different. And we've gotten a lot of different comments, um, in the fall and today. And those certainly weigh heavily on, on myself and other council members. I know that from talking to them. And it's also not the only factor. In the fall, you know, we found out that we had not adequately addressed fire access. And you can see from Economic Vitality Director Pierce's presentation tonight that we have now remedied that issue that was left outstanding and much debated and discussed at the meeting in the fall. So things are, are not simple. There are lots of externalities. We've heard from lots of people that this impacts very positively and is wonderful. And we've heard from people that it impacts very negatively, and it doesn't work for them. So, um, we really do benefit from hearing everybody's different points of view and try to incorporate them all into a safe and wonderful, enjoyable vibrant area. So with that, we will turn it over to public comment and like to hear from people what their personal experiences are. And if you just like to agree with a previous speaker, you can just say that you agree. If you'd like to tell us something new, we'd love to hear that as well. So each person will get three minutes to tell us what they'd like to tell us. That this is the opportunity that you have to comment on this agenda item tonight. So if you would like to comment on it, this would be the time to raise your hand so that you could let us know what you would like to tell us on this topic. And it, just as a reminder one more time, each person will have three minutes and tell us your name and your address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. And those calling in by phone can dial *9 to raise their hand. And there's quite a few people with their hands up, so just be patient, and I will call on everybody. And if you've, uh, if you're watching the television, we've gotten the number on the television corrected. So you can, you should be able to dial the number that appears now at the bottom of your screen. And so the first commenter this evening is Andy Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm just going to rant for three minutes, and I apologize for hogging the mic here, but, um, so, I guess a question, it appears as though on the agenda, there's a, um, opportunity for, um, for you guys to respond. So I would like a response if appropriate. Your survey netted over 13,000 resident responses, 17 restaurants and 34 businesses. Just a really rough ratio of, uh, positive feedback to negative feedback, pro-con. You know, was it, you know, 90, 10, 80%, 20%, 50/50? Just so we can all have a idea of, of the feelings of the town. You know, fact is, it's going to take many businesses, many businesses will never recover, many industries will never recover. It's almost like a forest fire, right? You, you, you lose a lot of old growth, and, and there's probably a lot of really good new growth that occurs. So I actually see a lot of opportunity within this. However, a lot of, um, family businesses, restaurants and otherwise, are going to struggle, not just for the summer, but for the rest of their lives or the rest of the decade to make their money back. So, uh, if, you know, I, I think there's probably folks who are looking at this, uh, street closure and thinking like, oh, what's the big deal? It's going to open to, um, you know, 100% occupancy at some point soon. The restaurants will be great, right? They'll sit everybody inside. So I don't know if that's a true statement. I think there's going to be a lot of people, and I've heard customer feedback, that they don't want to eat inside. They don't feel comfortable. There's a new, not everybody's going to get vaccinated. There's all these new, um, you know, strains developing. So I think that it is, you know, maybe a little premature to expect that once restaurants and businesses reopen that they're going to be, uh, bumping with their indoor dining again. You know, I was talking to a customer, this is, this is the biggest point I'd like to make tonight in my 53 seconds. A customer who moved here seven years ago, six and a half years ago, said, man, what has happened to, you know, Louisville Main Street? It's like, you know, there's businesses shutting down. It's, it's, you know, there's some strong ones, but, you know, the Waterloo is, is sitting there, you know, in a state of disrepair, you know, and Lafayette is building, you know, South Public Road, and has, is enticed and attracted some wonderful businesses, and, you know, we kinda, what, you know, what's up? And, um, I would like to point out that, uh, that is the view of many individuals in our, uh, in Louisville that it, it's not all peachy on Main Street. And so, uh, please take that into consideration. Thank you for letting me speak my mind.
Thank you. The next commenter is Christie. You might be muted on your end, Christie.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Christie. I live on the Farge. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. I live on the Farge. I live on the proposed bus route, the detour. I lived on the detour, uh, last year. I sent you all a letter. I wouldn't, I won't, um, reiterate all my points here, but I just wanted to sort of express again my deep disappointment in the lack of public engagement. So I am a negatively impacted stakeholder. You can look at a map and see all of us where we live on Lafarge, and there was no attempt to talk to us until 10 days ago from my Ward 1 rep, nothing. That was after he had voted to push this, uh, this resolution forward. So we got rolled up in your customer survey. It's not a resident survey. First question, did you come here last year to spend money? Second question, will you come here next year to spend money? That's a customer survey. You didn't even ask people. That's a customer survey. You didn't even ask people if they were residents until around two of that. So I'm more than a customer. I'm a resident. My house was built in 1885. I live on historic Lafarge Avenue. And I took a hit for the team last year. I don't wanna take a hit for the team again this year. But that doesn't make me selfish. It doesn't make me anti-business. It makes me a 20-year resident on a historic street who just wants to enjoy her neighborhood and her front yard this year because I didn't get to last year. It was all noise, all traffic, all the time. I didn't even let my kids ride their bikes down Lafarge at certain hours of the day because it's dangerous. So I'm asking you to vote no, all of those negative comments that the Economic Vitality Director sort of mentioned. Yep, I agree with all of those comments. Very negatively impacts me. It will. And I do think that there's an element of unfairness, that all of this is being the, the marketing campaign for outdoor dining and the closure of Main Street, which would net 10 feet of space for dining on Main Street. All of that is being done for Main Street restaurants and not being offered to all of the other wonderful businesses in Louisville. So I would ask that you please vote no on this. And also consider rejigging the EDC and having a rep from every single ward on that committee, as well as your EDI committee, as well as your Historic Commission, to make sure that economic vitality and economic growth kind of occurs citywide and within the context of Louisville's values. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Mimi Renee.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Mimi Renee. My family lives at 1132 Lafarge Avenue. My daughter walks to the Louisville Community School that she's attended, attended since she was two years of age. And we, we were absolutely impacted by this street closure last year. My daughter is no longer able to, to play in the front yard. And I support the closing of Main Street. However, this support is conditional. Being where we are, we're obviously impacted in a number of nuanced ways by the decisions of this council and the governance of this municipality. So our family's support of the Main Street closure is conditional upon the following. We would have absolutely liked to have been engaged earlier. And we would have liked to have seen an engineered traffic study that at minimum evaluates the contradiction between limited traffic infrastructure in Louisville and ever-growing traffic demand in an unregulated real estate market. As a community, we must make it clear where we want visiting vehicles to drive and where we want them to go and park. As residents, parking directly in front of our homes may not be the place where we would like for visitors to, to take up our spot. So both clear directional wayfinding to parking lots and an exploration of resident-only parking zones with decals should be explored. But at minimum, a closer engagement with those who are involved, who do live here and work here, needs to happen moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Andy Getkind.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Andy Getkind. I live at 729 Lafarge. I also have a business at 801 Main Street that I've had for a few years and will for a number of years to come. I wanted to make a few comments. First off, there have certainly been, from looking at the restaurant survey, an outweighed number of people in favor of the closure. And it's not all that surprising to me. I, I had heard of the survey a couple of weeks ahead of finding out directly from the city because I was on a mailing list of a restaurant and before that because a friend was on the mailing list of another restaurant. And understandably, they were doing their best to get their customers out in support. So it was also not surprising, as Kristi had mentioned, that there was not a mention of, do you live in Louisville until, as they say on the Economic Vitality Committee minutes, until a number of surveys had gone out. It looks like about nearly a quarter of the surveys had gone out before that question was asked. And the question, do you live in Old Town Louisville, was never asked. I also wanted to condition what support I may have for the closure on, as Andy Clark had referenced. I, I do believe that the closure should swing as the, the Downtown Business Association had suggested on when the restrictions are in place and when they are not. To simply have the restrictions closing restaurants from April, rather closing the street from April 26th to November 1st without reference to restrictions, I think doesn't give due weight to the impact on the rest of the city. Finally, if there is 14 feet right-of-way being provided to the fire department, that means there is an additional four feet of width on each side of the street from what we're experiencing now that will be granted to restaurants. And that is what's being given in place of the impacts to all of the residents that live in the blocks surrounding Main Street. And it seems to me that the downtown patios, which we already own and are a beautiful addition to downtown, could be added for the closure and moved in to accommodate that right-of-way. And it would be a much more attractive answer to what the city is looking to accomplish. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next commenter is Rick Crown.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Rick Crown, 46 West Perk Court and President of the Downtown Business Association. A few points that are probably self-evident to some extent. The DBA supports the temporary closure of Main Street. We support the analysis provided by the staff and the recommendations of the EDC. The survey numbers speak for themselves. The vast substantial majority in all three categories of people who were surveyed are in favor. The cities were, actually confirmed the DBA's research. We had two members of our Board of Directors, Tom Horst and Barbara Butterworth, go outdoor to door to Lafarge in February and talk to people. And tell you, Tom Horst didn't encounter anyone that was not in favor. Barbara encountered four. We, of course, had a number of people who were not home or didn't answer their door because it was probably about the coldest week of the year when they did that. It was shortly after we originally proposed doing the Main Street closure. So there was some outreach done by the DBA. Clearly, the residents on Lafarge don't feel that was enough. And we'll try to do a better job if anything like this comes up in the future. This is a temporary closure. Although the pandemic appears to be winding down and vaccines are progressing, downtown small businesses are clearly not out of the woods. Or as the mayor well stated earlier in this meeting, at the, the end is near, but you don't win race until you cross the finish line. And we are not across the finish line yet. Like to point out, the closure will help the restaurants to serve their customers, the vast majority of which are Louisville residents, will allow them to survive and to continue to employ their staffs, including their waitstaffs, chefs and crew, many of which are also Louisville residents. We endorse the formal detour of Main to Front Street to the extent that that can be done. And as I understand it, RTD has been a big stumbling block on moving the buses. We'd endorse moving the buses too, if RTD would be willing to do it. Let's see, I would like to mention a couple of things that were mentioned in the comments just before. Mimi Renee mentioned the clear wayfinding signs and designated parking. We absolutely agree. That sounds like an idea that ought to be pursued by the city. She also suggested a traffic study. I think that should be pursued by the city. Andy had mentioned, Andy Getkind had mentioned the closure should swing on when the restrictions are in place and when they are not. Support that. If it can be worked out in a practical manner. We do not support the idea of closing Main Street, opening Main Street, closing Main Street again and opening Main Street. However, if there was a trigger point when those restrictions are lifted, I believe we could probably go to the alternate plan that the Economic Vitality Director suggested. So please vote in favor of the resolution and thank you very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is Max O'Hern. Max, are you still there or did we just lose you?
That might have been my thought. So if Max, if you could raise your hand again, that would be helpful.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm sorry about that. Hi, everybody on the council. Thank you so much for letting me participate in the public feedback section of this meeting. My name is Max O'Hern. I'm a two-year resident of Louisville and I live on 601 Main Street. So absolutely one of the stakeholders involved in this discussion. I am encouraging you to vote in favor of closing Main Street. I really appreciate the detail and the number of considerations that have clearly gone into this proposal. While at the same time, I do wanna echo the concerns raised by many of the other folks who have also joined in this call, making sure that anything that needs to be studied is further encouraged to be studied and explored fully. I realize that a decision of this magnitude requires a lot of different details and a lot of different variables that go into it. And we're not always going to get everything perfectly, but I think it is absolutely a worthwhile endeavor. Last summer, I thought was an excellent, an excellent display of this community's vitality and everything that we have to share with each other in this troubling time. I think that city is much more than a geographic set of boundaries, but an agglomeration of lives, experiences and shared culture that we have to engage with each other. And so I feel that that is something that we should absolutely be striving for, while at the same time respecting that everybody is affected by this differently and has different inputs that need to be considered moving forward. Overall, though, on balance, I think this is an excellent idea and I am thrilled to be a part of such a community that would even consider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is calling in from a phone number that ends in 0301. You might, there you go.
My name is Tom Rafferty at 945 Rex Street. My hope is that you can distill this long continuing subject down to one thing. And I know it's many things, but can you distill it down to this? Is this truly a means to bridge the restrictions on restaurants? Or is it your long-term goal to permanently close Main Street for a bigger agenda? Number two, I was told that the DBA's sole intention of this proposal is to bridge the final challenge with the restrictions on restaurants and that they are fine with reopening Main Street regardless if this happens midsummer or whenever the restrictions are totally lifted. But that the city said, why do this when we have everything in place? So this is one reason it is hard to trust what continues to happen. Number three, I walked up both alleys and I saw what appears to be underutilized business property space for outdoor seating. I was told that the city forbid the use of this, yet they are okay with using a perfectly good Main Street enjoyed by all. Number four, we handed out flyers last fall. A friend said there were lies in the flyer and that we were spreading lies. The flyer said, may lead to a discussion on permanent closure. Here is where I heard that DBA idea of permanent closure from. At the very last five minutes of the August 18th, 2020 City Council meeting, when you were going around the table with further comments for the future, and most people have gone to bed because you're working later than everybody and I appreciate that. Our Honorable Mayor stated the following, and I quote from the minutes. Mayor Stolzmann stated, the DBA would like the council to have a discussion of a permanent closure of Main Street as well. Period, end of quote. Number five, I am broken-hearted for this town, but I thank you for whatever you can do to preserve our historic Main Street character with vehicular traffic that shares the street and does not impact our neighboring streets. In closing, I wish all the businesses good luck and Godspeed to get back to better than normal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next commenter is Corey Colvin Williams.
Hi, everybody. My name is Corey Williams and I live on 1889 Garfield Avenue here in Louisville. And in full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Louisville Revitalization Commission. And I just wanted to comment first as a citizen of Louisville and a resident to say that our family supports the closure of Main Street to support the, the downtown businesses. And that even though we received our first dose of vaccines today, we are still going to be taking the necessary precautions and wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable dining indoors to support our favorite restaurants. I do wanna mention something on behalf of the LRC is that we are actively exploring a wayfinding project. And so this is something that I think, the, the comments that we're hearing tonight, I think will really help inform, inform that process as well. And then just to the council and as a city as a whole, I think this is really great feedback in terms of promoting pedestrian and, and biker-friendly modes of transportation within our community to try and decrease the amount of traffic that goes in and out of downtown. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Eric H.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Eric Holicum, resident of 1016 Lafarge Avenue in Louisville. Sorry, I'm in a loud area here. I fully support the closure of downtown Louisville. I have three children and my youngest attends Louisville Middle School. I don't see the traffic between that, that occurs with the vehicular, or, sorry, the dark being any issue. And, you know, again, if you, if you look at the CDC guidance around what's the safest thing during the pandemic here, outdoor dining is one of the safest options for people. And we're, we're not out of this yet. Let's, let's help our downtown businesses. Let's keep open the options of outdoor dining and increase the options of outdoor dining to, to help our downtown businesses flourish. And, and let's take away the, the specter of this, you know, of the additional traffic on Lafarge out of the picture. I, I've lived it. I'm a resident of 11 years. It's not a major inconvenience and let's, I, I fully support the temporary closure. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Megan Bear.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Megan Bear. I'm a Lafarge resident in the path of the, the new bus route as well as the traffic. I would say I support the closure conditionally, also just pending the routing of traffic, detouring it away from Lafarge. I think that would be a great solution and a compromise. The buses is a real headache as well, but I'm not really coming up with any great solution for that. But as you can hear in the background, I have a, a little nine-month-old and he just started to sleep through the night and the buses and the traffic and the loud noise, just to give you a little insight into my personal grievance with it. We'll keep him up. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Andrew Langford.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. I'm Andrew Langford. I live at 1225, live at 1225 Lincoln Avenue. And for a lot of the reasons we've heard from, from a lot of our neighbors, I'm in favor of, of the closure and, and giving, you know, the restaurants need 200% occupancy to make back what they've lost in this last year. That said, I really That said, I really sympathize with my neighbors and friends over on Lafarge. The Dash is a big bus. I took it to Boulder every day until the pandemic started. And it's big and it's noisy. And I'm wondering, one thing I haven't heard discussed is the possibility of routing the Dash down Jefferson, which is a wider street. It has much less parking on it. And it still gets it on the pine in time to make the next stop there before you get the grant. So it seems like that could be a possible solution that would alleviate things on Lafarge, which is so much more congested than Jefferson is. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. The next commenter is Eric Reed.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to call in. My name is Eric Reed. I'm a resident here in Old Town Lewisville at nine one. Well, my residence is one thousand one Rex Street, but I'm also the business owner at nine one five Walnut Street. I am part of the DBA and a homeowner in Old Town Lewisville and a business owner. But I do want to actually read a letter from another business owner here in town, also a DBA member from Jenny Lavatch of The Singing Cook at seven twenty-eight Main Street, if that would be okay.
Yes.
To the city council, my name is Jenny Lavatch. I am also Eric Reed. I own The Singing Cook at seven twenty-eight Main Street and I'm also a retail liaison on the DBA board. Sorry, then I cannot be here to speak tonight, but I wanted to make sure that my voice as a business owner was heard on this topic. I, Eric, am generously offered to read a letter aloud on her behalf. I am very much in support of closing Main Street again for outdoor dining. My shop was incredibly lucky to have so many people supporting it throughout the pandemic and we are more than survived. And while I know that our community has been amazingly supportive of the downtown restaurants, they continue to struggle due to the restrictions they have had and continue to endure. The restaurant industry has been disproportionately affected by the ongoing pandemic and they need and deserve the opportunity to try, make up their losses any way they can. Once again, adding extra outdoor tables to increase their capacity is vital to their ability to recover. I firmly believe that last year's very popular outdoor dining program saved all our restaurants from shuttering and helped them survive the winter. Our downtown is a popular dining and shopping destination and it can only stay that way if our restaurants are not in danger of closing their doors permanently. Please, I ask you to vote yes on the street closure. The restaurants deserve your support. Thank you for your time. I would like to speak on my own, Eric Reed. You know, as a resident here in Old Town, as well as the business owner, a parent of children who go to school here in Old Town Lewisville, having Main Street shut down to the vehicular traffic has been an amazing response to the pandemic, which, you know, the pandemic impact on these restaurants and our retail and services. As a business owner, you know, I just want to support the closure of the Main Street this summer to help the local downtown restaurants as well as the services and the retail businesses built and sustaining on the residents and the surrounding areas. So I please implore you to vote for the closure this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next commenter is Jennifer Singer.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, I just wanted to voice my support for the closure of vehicular traffic on Main Street. As the first speaker said, it would have been nice to see the ratios of people that are in favor of this and people that are not in favor of this, if it was like ninety or ten percent or fifty fifty. But I did have a look in the addendum to the meeting and saw that there, I looked at like the first thirty letters and I didn't see anybody that was not in support of closure of vehicular traffic on Main Street. So that was something. I just from personal experience, when Main Street was closed, my family and I, we went and we would bike down to Main Street. We would have dinner down there. We walked up and down Main Street. We would have ice cream and sweet cow, but since the Main Street has been opened again to vehicular traffic, we just don't venture there as much because it's not as comfortable. And this year has been so difficult for all of the Lewisville restaurant owners and all the businesses on Main Street. But I think anything that we can do to support them, we're in favor of. You know, when Main Street was closed, I got friends from Boulder to come out here and Denver to come out here and meet me. And it was just a really comfortable atmosphere and something that was very positive in the pandemic. And like some of the other people said, you know, we're just not out of the pandemic yet enough that I feel comfortable going to eat in closed dining spaces. So I just encourage you to please vote in favor of the resolution to close Main Street to vehicular traffic. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is everyone's opportunity to comment on this agenda item this evening. So if you would like to comment, this is your chance to raise your hand to make comments on this agenda item tonight. And so we had gotten through everyone. There was a couple more hands up now, but I just want to let everyone know this is your opportunity to comment on this agenda item this evening. The next commenter is Lee Scriggins.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I live on Lafarge, seven twenty-eight Lafarge. I back up to the city building and to the to pour. I feel like the larger context of this is that we need a strategic plan for business and economic vitality that's bigger than just the DBA and bigger than just downtown and Old Town. You know, Caleb and Chris are our only voice as residents. And I really think it's disheart, it's, I understand that people like to come here. But I think what's missing is the realization that people like to come here because they like to walk by our houses, that our homes are sort of part of the marketing of the DBA and downtown. And I feel like the real estate market has put a lot of pressure on us. The increased traffic has put a lot of pressure on us. A lot of people are looking to make money in real estate investments and house flipping downtown. There's a reason there are three real estate companies on Main Street because they want people to walk by and kind of sell this tourist destination. There's Airbnbs that are on our block that are going to be opening up again, I'm sure. And I think the larger context of why we're focusing so much on downtown, where there's so many little places in our, our town that could be great walkable places, like I can think of five places that could be really lovely walkable destinations and could create economic vitality in so many different pockets. And the pressure on our neighborhood is high and the under-focus on other neighborhoods is so low. I just feel like it calls for a larger economic vitality business plan that is really forward-thinking and much more sophisticated than just this issue. I would really love it if you would do the, you know, pair this closure with the lifting of restrictions related to COVID and let this be like a temporary thing that's related to this crisis. And then take a step back and think about, well, where are we going as a community and not go from, it feels like a very kick the can, short-sighted approach that we have. And it would be great to get out from under that a little bit. I love living in a walkable place and I do love our businesses, but I think we're a bigger part of the charm of this business destination than people are really acknowledging. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Tom Horst.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name is Tom Horst. I own a business, a taproom, Crystal Springs Brewing Company, taproom at six oh four Main Street and also our brewery is at six five seven South Taylor Avenue. I'm also a member of the DBA and the restaurant liaison for the DBA Board of Directors. I'm speaking tonight more as a personal business owner because it seems like we're talking about businesses and we're not really talking about the people who own those businesses. Last year, we lost considerably more than twenty-five percent of our normal income. We had to close our brewery taproom because we had very little outside seating there. Last summer, and thank you for that, the Main Street closure allowed us to pay off bills and loans and help us kind of get ready for, for winter, but winter was much less than normal. It made things worse a little bit, but we also managed to survive. But it caused another summer of closure of Main Street would help us to get where we might have been had it not been for pandemic. Owning a business is risky. We do, we do not have a monthly salary and we're dependent upon sales. We also impacted by the cost of inventory, rent for payments, taxes, fees, paying our employees and more. Some months we do well, other not so well. Last summer was the only time that we had the kind of business that we normally did. Virtually all downtown business owners are actively involved in the community. We volunteer, we donate, we support. And we do so because we're invested in Lewisville and we love it as much as any of you. Lewisville is blessed with a unique, vibrant and homey downtown. Towns around us envy our downtown and are working hard to either revitalize their downtown area or create one. Others have almost destroyed their Main Street because they've driven out small businesses. Our downtown draws people to Lewisville and these people spend their dollars in other parts of town as well. I know this because I've heard it over and over again from business owners and other parts of town. I know we're drawing people from all over simply because of what we brought, because we asked them when they come to our taproom. We've had so many people tell us that summer and then we have in the eight years that we've owned a business in Lewisville. I urge you to think of us as people and residents or non-residents, but still own property in the, in the city and vote to continue the closure for one more season. Thank you.
Okay, Tom. The next commenter is John Howland.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm John Howland. I own Twelve Degree Brewing, excuse me, at eight twenty Main Street. And first of all, I would just like to reiterate kind of something that Tom just touched on, which is how much success the Main Street Dining Program was last year. It was really well executed and it literally saved us. I do not think we would still be here were it not for that program. And it, you know, comments from customers and as well as, you know, our experience was that it just created such a nice relaxed atmosphere on Main Street. So we're in the middle of this horrible pandemic and it still was a nice atmosphere out there. People really enjoyed themselves. And it was the, really the only safe way to, you know, go out in public and eat and drink. So it was really well done. And as I said, it literally saved us. People also commented to us at how well Lewisville in particular executed it compared with other towns. So I just wanted to mention that and, you know, also say thanks for that because it was huge. It was, it was sort of everything last year. Also, just a couple of points about Main Street businesses, restaurants in particular. We're in kind of a unique situation being on Main Street. We don't have a parking lot to put a patio in or, you know, other, other areas where we can do that. We're, so we're really a hundred percent dependent on what we can do on Main Street. So even having, you know, even this year, a modified version with the fourteen feet in the middle, having those extra four feet versus the, you know, the seasonal patios can make a huge difference. It's, it doesn't sound like much space, but, you know, every little bit adds up. So ideally, it would be, I, you know, I prefer what it was last year, but, you know, doing it again for another year would be massively helpful to us. And I can certainly sympathize with the folks who are inconvenienced by the RTD, you know, reroute. I would just ask maybe that, you know, again, it's, it's sort of about survival for us or not sort of, but literally about survival for us. So if they would, you know, could put up with it for a little bit longer, it would be, I'd be hugely grateful. So thanks for your time and I urge you all to, to vote for the closure again. Thanks again.
Thank you. The next commenter is Brad Seago.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Brad Seago, live at six one six Lafarge Avenue. My wife, Allison, I live here about half a block from Main Street and Pine. We love the charm of our Old Town. We love walking around here. We love our local entrepreneurs. We love our neighbors. I don't think I can articulate anything better than people that have already spoken before me, but I just want to put in one more vote, if you will, for people who live on Lafarge that are very much in favor of closing down Main Street and helping out not only just our, our local entrepreneurs, but maintaining the charm of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Pam Schmidt.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's Pam Schmidt. I live on, and my comment is more of a suggestion. I am super in favor of closing down Main Street, but I have a lot of family and friends who live over on Lafarge and I understand their concerns, so. The are there where that light is, maybe it could go somewhere by those businesses there that are already set up with that big parking lot. And then the people could go through that walking pedestrian area that we've already set up, thus alleviating the route there in the.
Pam, I think you cut out a little bit. And we can't hear you. If you could try moving, if you're on Wi-Fi, closer to the router and then re-raise your hand, we'll get back to you to try to finish up those comments. We just cannot hear you any longer. If you, if you're not on wireless, if there's a dial-in number that's posted on channel eight right now or on the city webpage and you can call in and raise your hand and we can get you that way too. And I'm sorry for the technical trouble. The next commenter is John Leary. You might be muted on your end.
January eleven sixteen Lafarge Avenue. I did not oppose closing Main Street last year and I do not propose or oppose it this year. I think the benefits to the businesses downtown are important. My problem this year, my, my overall issue is, is that this is a premise where, you know, at some time in the future, permanently closing off Main Street. But getting back to the, to the issue at hand, I, I think it would be important to reopen Main Street whenever it appears that we are, you know, essentially back to normal or, you know, on the track to be in normal. The, one could argue that if you're going to close it down, you need to close it down all year. The problem is the benefits are going to return if we do get back to normal. The other costs, the loss of the thirty-five parking spots, the the scavenger effect it has on other businesses. We know that from all the consultants claim that whenever somebody expands their business or builds a new business, that thirty percent of their new business is scavenged from, from other businesses. that 30% of their new business is scavenged from, from other businesses. The, the social costs to the neighbors continue. And so there's, there's a real total disbalance here or unbalance between the benefits dropping off and all the costs staying the same or even increasing. So I, I would just urge you to look at some reasonable way of doing away with the closure, should it be fairly evident that it is no longer needed. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is the community's time to comment on this agenda item this evening, being that it's a resolution. There's only one public comment opportunity. So if there are any other members of the public that would care to comment on this agenda item tonight, this would be your opportunity to raise your hand and do so. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And that takes us back over to council discussion on the topic. Any council members would like to start off the discussion? Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments, actually. I'd first like to start by thanking all of the residents of Lafarge for the impact that they've already experienced with the closure last year and hope that they will be as generous and open to a closure this year if we do vote to do this. I'd like to emphasize that this is temporary. This is only because of COVID-19. It has nothing to do with permanently closing Main Street. And I am in favor of setting the time for reopening Main Street, at least to the patios only, to point when the COVID restrictions statewide have been reduced to a point where the restaurants are experiencing full occupancy and a certain percentage of the, the residents have been vaccinated and are willing to go indoors to have their food. That being said, there are a couple of questions that I have about how the closure would actually happen. And I know that we're planning on having that fourteen-foot easement down the middle for emergency vehicles. And I think that's a wonderful idea. That covers my main concern from last year. And then I was wondering if there's any way that we could compromise or, or discuss with RTD and see if they would also be able at some way to use that fourteen-foot easement rather than shifting over to Lafarge so that the buses would still be on Main Street. Now, I don't know if RTD will do that or if it's wide enough or all these things, but something to look into. And then second, the parking, let's see. Oh, for the other, okay, can we have signs that as you come up to the, the the closed portion, that it directs cars to Front Street? I mean, I know buses will still go to Lafarge, but if we could at least get the, the automobile vehicle traffic diverted over to Front and that's a more business road and it would at least eliminate a little bit of the impact on Lafarge. And then lastly, I know one of the businesses that would be greatly impacted by the closure is the Chase Bank right on the corner there. And, and the reason that they would be impacted is because they would lose access to their parking lot and their drive-through would be very challenging. I actually discussed this with one person and they said that there could even be repercussions from Chase Bank closing their parking lot entirely if we don't allow them access from Main Street. So could they, could we keep that, just that west side of Main Street in front of the bank open and just block it from Waterloo to the south? So that we can still access the parking lot into Chase? So after all of those comments, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. And, and just, I think if other council members have multiple topics they want to have brought up and discussed, we should probably take topics one at a time. So council members can reflect on different varieties of topics. I think some of the things you said there were comments, but I do want to just give Economic Vitality Director Pierce a moment to just elaborate a little bit for everyone on the efforts both last year and this year that staff went into trying to reroute the RTD bus. And, you know, we've gotten a lot of suggestions around what we might try looking into. And I just want folks to know that we have looked into some, if not all of the things that have been proposed and give Economic Vitality Director Pierce a chance to just elaborate on that a bit.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, we did engage with, with RTD and Deputy City Manager Davis may want to speak to that as well. The, the main item we did explore with them over the winter and they did test the option was to detour from Main at South over to Front Street and they found that not to be a satisfactory, satisfactory option for them to key points being turning radius and ADA access. So I haven't specifically explored the access lane with them, but I believe based on what I learned about their requirements, it won't be satisfactory for their bus because it wouldn't be ADA accessible for their patrons to reach the bus in the closure in that access lane. That's, I, I don't want to speak to RTD and totally say that's a no, but just based on prior conversations, they like their detour to Lafarge. It works functionally for them and it's, and it's well-known. So, you know, it's been a detour that's, that's standard and has been in place. So I think that's sort of what's been explored with, with RTD. I don't know if you want me to speak to the other questions now or if you want to hold those for other topic areas.
Well, I think we'll start with that one and then we'll take the next. I think Councilmember Ley may want to elaborate on some of Councilmember Fahey's points and then we might turn it back over to you for some more clarity. Thank you, Economic Vitality Director Pierce. Councilmember Ley?
Yeah, I think, thanks. I, I think I have more, a couple of, of general comments at, at the beginning and, and sort of what I would divide it into is of the past, present and future. I think it's really important to recognize what has happened so far. And what's happened so far is we've had, we've had COVID-19, we've had restrictions on occupancy that affect the restaurants disproportionately to other businesses. And they've been hard hit and we know that. And we've heard about that. And we know that they've been helped in the past, in the last year with the closure of, of Main Street for that period of time. A lot of the business owners are local residents, employ locals, and certainly serve our entire community as well as, as others. And I think you've heard from a number of them tonight about how that effort has helped. I think because the residents of Lafarge that you've heard tonight and others are not of one mind in this by any means, as is true among the businesses on Main Street as well as others. And, but there, you know, there's been some discussion about the the results of the survey and, you know, which disproportionately indicated support for, for closure. But it's really important to, to, I think, echo one thing that Mr. Leary said, which is that just as there's been a disproportionate effect of these COVID-19 restrictions on restaurants in particular and, and restaurants on Main Street, among others. And we've, we've looked at other ways of helping restaurants citywide. But it's also disproportionately impacted the residents of Lafarge. Because this isn't, this isn't street fair and it's not, it's not the farmer's market. It's not once a week or whatever for a certain period of time. It's every day. And it's the bus. And the bus is really important that it goes through Lewisville. We want to keep the bus coming through Lewisville. But it doesn't normally go through that neighborhood and it's every half an hour or so. It's loud and disruptive. And the, the vehicle traffic, car traffic, but, but heavy vehicle traffic, trucks and so forth, also very loud. This is, this is a disproportionate impact on, on one neighborhood. And I think it's important to recognize a couple of things. And Councilmember Fahey, thank you. I think we all owe a huge debt of gratitude to the people on that street. They, you know, there wasn't an outcry when we first closed the street last year. I think all of those residents were very supportive at that time. Their supporters, you know, what they didn't say is all of those folks eat at restaurants downtown and support those businesses downtown. There's no question, there's not this us versus them by any means. And that's really important to know because I think there's a tendency for all of us to, to do the us versus them thing here. It's us. Them, if there is a them, is the virus and its variants. It's not other Louisvilleans. It's not business owners. It's not people on the far, it's not the wider community. And, but those residents support the restaurants. And as Skriek say, said, at least Skriek said just a little bit ago, they're part of the business community that serves the business interests of downtown at, just for being there as homeowners. The beautiful homes there, the quaint neighborhoods, the historical structures that they are and, and the care with which most downtown residents take care of those homes and so forth are really a part of the business community just by being there. And so, yes, there's also the business of enjoying your home. But I think those are, those are things that don't get emphasized enough. I think they're really important. And they are disproportionately affected. So I, I think we do owe a big debt of gratitude. I think you've heard from some of the businesses how much they do appreciate that. And it can never be too much of that. Currently, we aren't out of the woods. The mayor said at the outset, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure the finish line piece. I, I wish I was maybe quite as sanguine. I think there's going to be multiple finish lines. And it's, you know, we're going to face challenges in the future. But closing Main Street is going to, if, if we go that direction, is going to continue to affect the Lafarge residents. It, it's not without a cost and it's being borne by them. I think it's important to recognize that. I think that we've also heard, certainly currently, the, the restrictions on restaurants are still hobbling them financially. Those are all COVID-19 related impacts. I think the other piece of this, which is important, is that there are other residents in Lewisville who are not going to be comfortable once the, the COVID-19 occupancy restrictions are relaxed a little bit to go into restaurants and, and use them. Will that be forever? No, it isn't going to be forever. But for a period of time, I think there is going to be that demand and it is a COVID-19 effect. And I think all of us know people in our families, people who are particularly susceptible who, who that, that is going to affect. So I think that's an issue too. I think as far as the, the, one of the things that we can do absolutely is to detour traffic that would otherwise go downtown, not to Lafarge, but to Front Street. That has a variety of benefits. One, it, it actually takes some of the pressure off of Lafarge. Not all of it, maybe not even the most painful part of it for the residents, which is still going to be the buses and the trucks. But directing people with signage to go down South Street to Front Street is very realistic. I've had a discussion with City Manager and with the Director of Public Works that's doable. It has another advantage apart from helping the residents, I think, that it actually directs traffic to businesses, to the business area. So it's a double win there. And there's just no reason not to do it. I recognize that it's going to put a little more pressure perhaps on, on a different neighborhood a little bit. But I think that's at a, it's an appropriate way of, I think, sharing some of the externalities. And I really encourage us to adopt that and add that to whatever resolution that we have because I think it's a, it's a thing that we can do in good faith for, for the residents of, of Lafarge. That's going to be a benefit frankly to others. So that's sort of the present. I think the future is this business is back to normal. I mentioned the issue that is going to, you know, it'll decay over time. We hope that there will be people, even when we've lifted or some of the restrictions are lifted on occupancy. There's, there is continuing worry by residents about dining indoors. And to enable them to do that, I think it's important that we, we give them that opportunity and the businesses ought to be willing to serve them if that's the case. I think to Tom Rafferty's point at the beginning, and this is very much the last point that I have on the future, which is we're not talking about a permanent closure here. This measure that we're talking about is tied very directly to COVID-19 and the restrictions on the businesses disproportionately affecting by those restrictions. And so I feel very comfortable in saying that this is not a prelude to that. That discussion could happen at some point, I suppose. Certain won't have my support. But I think that right now, we've got something before us that isn't the best and it continues to put more pressure on one part of this community than others. And we ought to appreciate that, thank them for that and continue to try to find ways to mitigate. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I appreciate comments that we've heard so far from the public and from my colleagues, I think. You know, one thing I think is interesting and cool to note, I lost track somewhere, but I think we had nineteen or twenty comments from the public and I think eight or nine of those were from Lafarge residents. So a pretty good showing tonight. And, and, you know, what I, what I think we heard from a lot of them is what we're all experiencing both as staff and as council members is that it's, you know, it's complicated. I, I think we're hearing like it, it's, we support the idea of the closure, but the, the negative parts are tough. And so I do want you guys to know that, that we hear that and that you hear that from my mouth as well, that it's unfortunate that, I don't want, I don't want to paint RTD as the villain, but I know that Director Pierce and Megan Davis have also worked a lot with RTD for other solutions and it's been difficult. I think if we could just wave a magic wand and, and push it to Front Street or push it to Lincoln or Jefferson, I mean, it was just really easy and we had total control, that would be a different story. And so I just want to make sure Lafarge residents know that we aren't as city staff or council saying, hey, let's put the bus back on Lafarge. It's not our desire either. So I think we're all sort of frustrated by that repeated inconvenience for you, um, on that street. And we understand that it's a real one. So, um, I, I apologize that I don't have the power to, to change that route, um, unilaterally. Uh, the survey results were in our packet, which you can find online. Um, but some people asked questions about that. So you can see, obviously there are lots of questions. I can't answer all that. Megan, you could, um, Director Pierce, he could illuminate that or bring that up, um, if you, if you'd like. But it was, it was about a ninety to ten positive to negative. Um, uh, you know, on, on whether residents wanted it. But again, there are lots of different style of questions. So depending on the question, those numbers are a little different. Um, and also just, you know, like, I think with the public outreach, I think it's so funny for, um, us, right? As council members, we're involved in these conversations every two weeks, if not every week, um, in phone calls and emails and on the side and all of these different moments of connections. I think we forget sometimes that, you know, there's a resident listening in tonight that this is the first time they've been a part of any of the conversations. Um, and so it feels very, uh, you know, immediate and soon and all these things. And I think for us, we, we sometimes forget that, um, just because we've been talking about it for ten months, doesn't mean the residents feel that way. Um, so I apologize if some of you feel like you haven't been a part of the conversation enough and I, and I, and I hope you feel heard. Um, you know, nationally, I think it's right around twenty percent of restaurants have closed during COVID. Um, and if we think about what that would mean to our Main Street, that would be about four or five, four or five restaurants just in the downtown area, it'd be twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen restaurants in Louisville. So I just want to give a ton of credit to the residents of Louisville for supporting our restaurants all over town. Um, and the things that we've all done as residents to hold our businesses up and to the city for the grants and the outdoor dining last, um, summer and the continued dining over the winter and the conversation we have right now. I don't think it's a mistake that those are two huge reasons the restaurants have been more successful than average around the country. But I think the third one, and it'll lead me into more tangible stuff tonight, is the risk that a lot of these restaurants have taken, that they will recover when COVID is over. So they might be bleeding, they might be losing money, but they're not losing enough to close. They're, they're, they're able to dip into their savings enough, they're able to carry on enough with this dream that when this ends, they'll recover. And I think, um, you know, this summer will, as, as some, somebody said, I think the summer will determine the success and, and permanence of some of our businesses if they can recover enough or if it's just they need to cut their losses at this point. So a lot of my, um, energy around supporting the closure is, one, yeah, supporting the restaurants, but two, a, a hearing from our residents that they feel safer outdoors. And the more outdoor space we can give our residents, the better. And, and in this particular way, you know, you can access parks, you can access all these things. Um, but to give more outdoor seating, uh, to a congested downtown area, um, I think is positive for the foreseeable future, um, while COVID is still going on. And, and so I think that, you know, for me, the, the major thing is, you know, if you go to a restaurant today for lunch, outside is packed and inside is empty. And, and that matters, right? That matters that even though people are allowed to dine inside and there's capacity to be inside, people aren't inside, not most people, um, but it's packed outside. Um, again, with spacing and tables being skipped and all that stuff. So I think we want to be really careful about saying this should end when restaurants have a hundred percent capacity. Because right there, you know, a hundred percent capacity, but they might still have a six foot, uh, distance. And so while they have a hundred percent capacity, they just can't actually put people. So I think we want to be really careful about lifting the outdoor dining program for when there's a hundred percent capacity. Cause also the governor could just basically push a button next week and say, hey, we're statewide, we're in blue, a hundred percent capacity for restaurants. Like, so we don't want to tie it to state necessarily or the county and we don't, we can't control any of that. So if we get blue tomorrow, do Louisville residents suddenly feel comfortable eating indoors? Um, I don't think so. I think that, that because of COVID, we want to maximize the outdoor seating while the weather's good. And I want, I don't, having experienced, we experienced last year, I don't want to have this argument every month or two months or three months about whether we should do it or not. So I want it to be really clear tonight. Then that's one of the things we're talking about in the EBC is just have it be really clear how long this is for and then not mess around with it, not say, well, maybe we'll close it earlier, maybe we'll keep it open longer, but to give some consistency and some, um, uh, reliability for our residents, for Lafarge residents to know date certain, this is what we're doing. And to make a commitment to each other that, that we're not revisiting those dates, good or bad, that, you know, that we are going to do this for a certain amount of time because it's the right thing because of COVID and then it's over. So to Tom Rafferty's thing, this isn't permanent, it is temporary, but it's permanent for the summer. Like it is not something we're going to have a bunch of meetings about, uh, to try to figure out whether we should keep going. Well, well, they're a hundred percent, but there's still this and we have a conversation. I just think it's too much. Um, and so I'd like to us to save our time in that way. Um, and just to one other comment, and I'm done, you know, someone said, you know, hoping that we have a bigger strategic plan than, than just, you know, whether we're closing Main Street or not. And I want you to know, we definitely do, there's a whole strategic, uh, economic vitality strategic plan in place. And this is, uh, sort of on the side, but it fits into some other bigger strategies. But we absolutely have a more bigger overarching, longer term strategy. Um, but you know, one of those major strategies is avoiding and filling vacancies. And we don't want to lose a bunch of businesses that we then have to fill. That's part of the larger economic vitality strati- uh, strategy. So, um, Mayor, I think those are all my comments that we, anybody needs from me at this moment, but, um, thank you.
It's Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for their, their comments. You know, um, I, I, I'm a member of the Economic Vitality Committee and I was one of the three on that committee that support, uh, the temporary closure for 2021. So, uh, regardless of all my other comments that I'm going to go through here, I want it to be very clear that I support this resolution. And you know, I think it's also important to reflect on what the city council and the city staff has done over the last year. You know, we've done three grant programs, um, we did the downtown closure. And, you know, we have an Economic Vitality Committee, we have an Economic Vitality Director who's spent a lot of time over the last year doing a lot of things. Um, I look at all the communications coming from the Economic Vitality, um, efforts from the city. And, you know, the city has tried to help businesses as much as possible, you know, given the situation we're in. So, um, you know, the motivation for this is because we're reacting to COVID and we're reacting to the impact to, uh, the economic sustainability of the businesses all over the city. Um, right now, tonight, we're talking about the ones downtown, but we have to recognize we've had restaurants close outside of downtown during this period of time and in restaurants that probably wouldn't have closed if we hadn't have the impact of COVID. Regarding a permanent closure or is this a step in that direction? When, when we as the city council stalked, talked about our work plan for 2021, we specifically said we were not going to be addressing that until post-COVID, if we addressed it at all. What we're reacting to right now is an economic impact to the businesses and to the city. And that's, that's the, the beginning and end of it for me. I, I think it would be, uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't, uh, mention the impacts to, uh, the residents of Lafarge and other areas in downtown. Uh, all the areas around downtown, the residential areas have, have had impacts in very, very many different ways. Uh, Councilor Leah suggested maybe some routing of traffic and so forth. I'm, I'm good with whatever we can do to try to minimize impacts. Um, and if it's something that the city staff believes will work and can be supported, I'll be supportive of that. I, I don't want to, um, put everything in the resolution that's going to be prescriptive if there might be a better way to do some of those things. But I think if we can put something in there with the intent of what we want to do to try to minimize impacts, I'll be in total support of that. One thing I'd like to mention about the survey and, you know, this is something that council and the EBC talked about. I was really hoping that it would be a more targeted survey for those residents who are around downtown. When the survey got launched, uh, we actually had people who lived out of state that responded to that. We had people from Lafayette and Superior. Um, that's interesting, but it's not the information that I was looking for. And I was hoping for more of a targeted survey. So we knew the people downtown and it's, I cannot interpolate from what we have to be able to answer those questions. But, um, I'm in support of this. Um, if, if Councilor Lay or others want to make some minor changes to it about the intent of what we're doing or to give staff some, um, some flexibility about how this is implemented, I'm absolutely fine with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to express my support for this, uh, resolution as well. Um, I appreciate what the Downtown Business Association and many of the thoughtful business owners um, had to say this evening. Uh, I always appreciate hearing from, uh, the owners of, of Crystal Springs Brewery um, as a strong, um, uh, anchor to Ward Three. Um, I am, uh, the, the one thing that I will say is, you know, I appreciate the comments that the, that the Downtown Business Association has made about this being sort of a, a temporary, uh, but necessary, um, endeavor. I also feel for the residents of Lafarge, um, because it is, you know, they are taking the brunt of the, this particular, um, intervention. Um, and, uh, and, you know, it, it is true that, um, policies like this, um, have unintended consequences um, and that they, they have suffered, uh, the most. Um, I, I will, uh, you know, I'm glad that we have put a, a date certain on this at the end to Councilmember Dickinson's point, um, such that we can sort of make this decision this evening, give businesses some certainty about, um, what their business will look like over the coming months, um, just like we did last summer. Um, and then we can, uh, you know, move back towards normalcy. Um, I would like to offer some, um, some amendments to the, uh, sort of the, the whereas sections of the, of the resolution, just to clarify what I think is the, um, the, you know, sort of the, the history and the intent of this particular resolution. Uh, and also to, to draw attention to the fact that the city, uh, has all, has, has for, for many years supported downtown businesses and outdoor dining specifically with the patio program. And it's already been mentioned, mentioned before. Um, I thought that um, by Councilmember Maloney, uh, Mayor Proton Maloney, excuse me, uh, of the, um, of the grant programs was also relevant. Um, you know, the council, we, we've had to make some very difficult decisions over the last, uh, year with COVID. Um, and, you know, the success of the, the downtown outdoor dining program and the closure of Main Street, I think on maintaining, um, you know, the character of Main Street, um, it, it has, has been great. And so, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of that. Um, so at the, at the right time, I have a few clauses that I can offer, um, as amendments to the, to the resolution, um, not to change any of the content, um, but really to just draw attention to, to some of the discussion and I think the agreement that we have reached, um, with, uh, both public safety, uh, the downtown businesses and the downtown businesses, um, and doing our best to try to mitigate um, the, the, um, impacts on the residents. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Brown, why don't you go ahead right now and describe the whereas's that you'd like to add? Just see if there's general consensus or adding them.
You bet. Um, so let me, let me just see, um, pull those up real fast on my computer here. Um, I want to read them so that I don't, um, mess them up here. Um, I was un- unsure of the exact date that we started the patio program. So I'm going to let, um, staff insert the appropriate year. But basically on page two of the resolution, I propose inserting the following whereas clauses to clarify the discussion, the intent of council and EBA. So after the whereas that ends with, with the impacts of COVID-19, I would insert the following, and again, this is on page two towards the top. Uh, whereas since 2013 roughly, the city has, the city of Louisville's patio program has supported Main Street restaurants by providing additional outdoor dining opportunities. And whereas the closure of Main Street is designed to provide additional support to Main Street restaurants as they deal with the necessary but temporary indoor dining capacity restrictions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas it is the intent of the city council and the Downtown Business Association that the closure of Main Street during 2021 is temporary and the right of way of Main Street to remain public space. That would be it.
Thank you. Any council members have, uh, I guess I'll ask if there's any objection to any of those whereas's being added? Or if there's general agreement that we can add those in? I see some, one, a few thumbs up, a few nods, any discussion around that? All right, so whenever the motion or moves, um, if you'll please just indicate that you're moving to approve the resolution with the whereas's added into the, the resolution, uh, as stated by Councilmember Brown. And Councilmember Brown, if you'll email those over to City Year Commute, that would be great. And then, Councilmember Fahy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to move that we adopt Resolution Number Twenty-Six, Series 2021, a resolution approving the temporary closure of portions of Main Street in downtown Louisville for outdoor dining areas and include the whereas's that Councilman Brown just voiced.
And just before we take a second, I want to, um, you, you made an indication that you wanted to include an additional, uh, comment in the sections, maybe a fourth section to give direction to city staff to enact a detour. And Councilmember Lay brought that up as well. Was that intended in your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second, sir?
A second.
Councilmember Dickinson seconds the motion. Is there any other discussion?
Uh, I just want to thank everyone for weighing in, um, and, and addressing a number of, I mean, we have not been able to address all the externalities and we've all identified that in our comments. But a number of the major issues, um, like the lack of, uh, fire access and emergency access for ambulances and police has been addressed. Uh, a number of the other issues that people have brought forward ha- have been worked through. Um, so I'm grateful of the Economic Vitality Committee's work to do those things. I think we do need to continue to recognize that this puts a tremendous amount of impact on an area that already has a lot of impacts from, uh, driving and parking and noise and those kinds of things. And so as a community, uh, we all have the opportunity to help out with that by walking and biking to downtown and to the other areas of town. And so, um, you know, I think it might be nice to ask staff to do a postcard encouraging people to walk and bike to their restaurants and, and, uh, retail establishments if they can. Um, one of the first things I did, um, when I became mayor, um, was get rid of the mayor's parking spot in downtown. The mayor always had a parking spot and I just felt that it sent the absolute wrong message that we would have a parking spot for one person. That just seems crazy, um, given that we have limited parking, uh, available and that, you know, we, we wouldn't want to encourage people to drive in the first place. So, you know, it's not to say I've never driven downtown, I have. And that, you know, sometimes it happens to the best of us or the worst of us. And, um, but we all just try to do our best and, and bicycle when we can and walk when we can, if we can. And that can make a big difference. Um, so I'd ask everybody to try to help out. I also want to just take a moment to comment about, um, the bus. Uh, it is absolutely, uh, a burden with the emissions and the noise on the residents of Lafarge. Uh, but I want to speak on behalf of the bus in the community. Bussing is a great equalizer for our community. We talk about equity, diversity and inclusion a lot. Uh, we carefully have, uh, located our affordable housing on bus lines so that, you know, everyone has an opportunity to get to their family, to get to work, to get to school, um, whether or not they can afford a car. And, you know, lots of, lots of our residents that can't afford a car will still take the bus, um, to help reduce the impact on the environment. And bus ridership has certainly declined with COVID-19, uh, but RTD is working hard to restore that ridership. And that's a critical part to helping make sure that we reduce our carbon emissions and to making sure that, you know, there are good ways for people to get around the community. We should all absolutely continue to work on thinking of better ways of doing that. Electric buses, quieter buses, lighter buses, um, biking and walking when we can. Um, so it's not to say that the answer that we have in place is the only way of doing it or that it's even the best way of doing it. But it is really important. We have hundreds of people who work in downtown Louisville and, uh, we have people that need to get to the library and they might not be able to drive and they might not be able to see. We have residents that are blind and they rely on the bus to get to the library. So I just think it's important to realize that, you know, we've said a lot of negative things about the bus, but it's a very important part of our community that, that's an equalizer for all of us and helps make it, um, accessible. but it's a very important part of our community that that's an equalizer for all of us and helps make it accessible. So I just I I just needed to take a moment to say that. And there's a few hands from very important commentators that are going to get things straight for us. So we have a hand from our city attorney raised and a hand from our city manager raised. And so I'll just ask City Manager Bolzer, do you want to go first or second?
I can go second.
Okay, City Attorney Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to read into the record the new Section Four to make sure that the, before you take the vote, that council members find the language to be acceptable. So what I gathered from the discussion, the proposed new Section Four would read, "City Staff Is Directed to Erect Signage to Detour Non-RTD Traffic to Front Street."
Thank you. Is that acceptable, Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
And Councilmember Brown or Dickinson, I'm sorry. Yes, he has his thumb up. Okay. Thank you very much, City Attorney Kelly. That is very helpful to have that in the record.
Thank you.
City Manager Bolzer?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just, and I don't know if the fire chief is on the line, but I know there were concerns about detour language down Fun Street while special events are gone are ongoing. So I guess so I I'm not sure how we want to give direction to staff or recognize that there will be some times when those that detour language may not be in place because there are special events that are closing Front Street down. So I again, I don't know if the police chief or the, or I'm sorry, the fire chief or the Economic Vitality Director want to weigh in or how we might want to change that language to represent that sometimes that that detour may not may not be appropriate. So if there's one way.
Thank you. Chief Wilson is on, but I'll let Councilmember Lay clarify before we turn it over to the chief. Councilmember Lay?
Yes, thank City Attorney Kelly for generating the language. I think it, there needs to be a qualification that the the signage would be, you know, in the way that that the Director of Public Works said, literally, we're going to turn turn the signs around during the the times when there is street fair and and farmer's market. So and and I presume there may be other events because that was mentioned by Director Pierce. And I think Chief Wilson may have something to say about that, too. But I think we need to allow in the amendment for those exceptions, which, as I understand, that can be addressed pretty simply, albeit with some effort on the part of city staff to to be watchful over that.
Chief Wilson, did you want to weigh in this evening? This is Chief Wilson weighing in tonight from our district. And we really want to thank you for your service and apologize for putting you in the middle of this.
Oh, no problem. And I want to thank City Manager Bolzer for bringing, giving me the opportunity and and all of you giving the opportunity to to address this concern that I have with the signage. I just, it it's going to block the roads if we don't turn those signs around during special events during street fair and during farmer's market. So and that will hamper my response, and that's not good for the citizens of Louisville for number one. And number two, it's going to frustrate the drivers. And so I don't think we want frustrated drivers going, well, the detour sign to go this way, but now the road's blocked. Now I've got to turn around. Oh, wait a minute, I got another person blocking me. So I do appreciate the thoughts about this and some ideas of how to correct it. And I'll work with city staff to make sure that my concerns are addressed. So thank you very much for allowing me to make a couple comments.
Thank you, Chief Wilson. And it looks like City Attorney Kelly has a new proposal for us. City Attorney Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. So to address this concern, the proposed language would read in the new Section Four, "City Staff Is Directed to Erect Signage to Detour Non-RTD Traffic to Front Street During Times That Front Street Is Open to Through Traffic."
Thank you. Councilmember Fahy does that address the issue and work for you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
As a second, do you agree? Thank you. And Councilmember Lay is the person who proposed the idea that works for you as well. I see a thumb up. Okay. Any other discussion on the matter this evening? Councilmember Dickinson?
Mayor is just saying, say, if we do the detour signs just right, we can make people who come into town have to drive by every single one of our businesses before they get out of town if we just make it.
It's fun.
Sorry about that.
And then I I just wanted to ask City Manager Bolzer, do you need an additional section around doing a postcard to encourage people to walk and bike to their favorite restaurants in town and their shops in town? Or is that just giving direction enough on that?
No, that's fine. Direction is fine.
And are folks on board with that, just encouraging the community to walk and bike? Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, I am in favor of that. But I also just was reminded about the issue of the the closure in front of the Chase Bank and their access to their parking lot. Is there anything that we can put in here regarding that?
So we'll ask Megan Pierce, one way we might handle that is to just allow some latitude around that issue to the staff. I mean, that issue and other issues like that might come up, and what we might want to do is, you know, it is clear that the city manager's office is authorized to implement procedures. So maybe along issues like that, we could give them some latitude. But I I don't know if we can have a half a street open or not. So maybe we'll turn it over to Economic Vitality Director Pierce to to talk about that a little bit for us.
Sure. So so Chase Bank is opposed to the closure. They are not happy about losing their access and their parking circulation. That's definitely a concern. They they raised that concern last year, and I've been in contact with them this year several times. So it's been public safety's position in the past that they would not allow a partial road closure. So the road is either closed or it's open. So if we, you know, if we allow the circulation from their parking lot to access onto Main Street, then we we would have to close that in a different way than I think we otherwise envisioned the setup related to this emergency access lane. I can certainly revisit that with them if their viewpoint has changed. But we we did explore that last year because of several businesses that were opposed to the original closure, and that was not something that they were willing to to accommodate because I think it creates confusion and potential vehicular accidents raised in those areas. So we have communicated that with Chase that we we don't see an immediate alternative to giving them their normal access if the temporary closure is approved.
Councilmember Fahy?
Well, I guess it doesn't have to be included in the resolution, but it would it would make me feel better about the way we deal with businesses that are opposed to the closure if we did deal with this particular issue, and especially since that 14-foot access is going to be open. I don't see the harm in having that one area just be one direction, only going south, not north, but being able to come south and and turn right into their parking lot. So if there's any way that that can be arranged, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other discussion this evening on the motion? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call though?
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is ordinance number 1805, Series 2021, "An Emergency Ordinance Amending and Restating the Requirement to Wear a Face Covering Within the City of Louisville." This is our first and final reading because it's an emergency ordinance, and this is our public hearing to adopt as an emergency ordinance. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures. And just I will restate that there are some additional comments that were entered into the record after the packet was published that are posted online. We'll have a staff presentation and then take public comments. And because it's an ordinance, this topic has two rounds of public comment for our city charter. So we'll take public comments and then have some council discussion. And that's when we'll come back and have our second round of public comments, and then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take action. The staff presentation this evening, I believe, is from our city attorney Kathleen Kelly.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'll be brief in respect of the late hour. But this matters before you in response to the state changing its statewide masking order and Boulder County Public Health also instituting a new order that is more restrictive than the state order. So really is the one to focus discussion upon this evening. As you know, the city has had in place since last spring a local masking order that is in some regards more protective than the order that was in place issued by Boulder County Public Health. What is before you is changes, and they're presented in both redlining and clean versions in the packet that would bring our, the city's masking ordinance up to date with events that have occurred since you last reviewed this matter and also conform to the Boulder County Masking Order. One item that I would draw your attention to, and and I expect there may be some discussion on this issue anyway, tonight, is the exceptions with regard to children. The Boulder County Order exempts children who are 10 and under from the masking order. And the draft presented to you in your packet this evening exempts children under the age of 10. So if the intent is for the city to have the same exemption as the Boulder County Order, we would want to change that to 10 years of age and younger. There is a bit of a discrepancy there. But also, you know, as with any aspect of this ordinance, all of this is in your discretion. The city does have the authority to impose masking requirements that are more stringent than Boulder County or the state. It cannot impose requirements that are more lenient. And I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. And I just want to add a few comments from the public health meetings that I've been attending on behalf of our our city with the Metro Mayor's Caucus. So a number of the public health directors are concerned because there'll be some changes coming from the state to put more control at the county level. And so they're just concerned that people won't get the right message because different counties will have different things in place as we step down the pandemic. So they really want to ensure that we're all in this together and that we make it clear that masking is still important when indoors. And some of the, you know, questions and comments they've been getting are around, well, what if I'm vaccinated? You know, then can I go in the grocery store without a mask? Well, the problem is, it puts a lot of burden on the retailer then because we're still requiring, if you look in all of these different ordinances, there's dual responsibility between the individual and the business. So businesses are required to have their customers mask inside their business if they're not vaccinated. But it would be quite intrusive for business owners to be going up to customers and saying, you know, are you vaccinated? Are you not vaccinated? It's it's hard enough already with a lot of the stress and chaos around enforcing the mask mandate. And so public health is just very concerned about making that even more difficult with having businesses have to ask patrons if they've been vaccinated or to show a vaccination card. So until that develops further, they're just asking us all to please pitch in a little bit more whether or not you've been vaccinated and continue to wear a mask when you're in a public business or like a public building like a library, and just just please make that sacrifice to help us get through to the end. So that it's really hard for people, and we've been at this for quite a long time, but we just don't want to lose all the great progress we've made or to lose momentum here in the in the final months. I'm more optimistic than Councilmember Lay. But it's like, it's not optional. We all need to be optimistic at this point. So I just wanted to explain that, that they're looking for us all to give out clear guidance that we still need people to be masking here at this point, at this moment in time in our area. It's still important when we're indoors to have people wear their masks. So I wanted to add that. And then we will have our first round of public comment, and then go back to council questions and comments on this topic. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on our mask order this evening? Seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments. Any council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I really appreciate, first of all, I I just want to say I appreciate all of your comments tonight about masking and about just the importance of of continuing to take the pandemic seriously. I know in my workplace, we are seeing upticks of individuals who are testing positive for COVID. And statewide, we are seeing upticks in the in the rates of COVID as well as here in Boulder County. It's easy for us to think that the weather is getting nicer, that people are getting vaccinated, and therefore the pandemic is over and we can gather in ways that we used to. But it's really not. And and we need to be very careful about creating an artificially long tail on this pandemic because we are unwilling to take the steps that are necessary, that we have already been taking for the next several months. So with that said, I think I really appreciate the importance of maintaining consistency whenever possible with our neighboring communities and with our local public health department. But as the city attorney indicated, we've always had a mask order that was more protective here in Louisville than than the surrounding communities and then Boulder, Boulder County Public Health has has indicated. And I think one of the best examples of that is related to children in particular. You know, our children who go to school every day, who are between five and 10, already wear masks for six, eight hours a day. It works great. Even children at schools or in preschools younger than five also wear masks. And what we have seen is because of the 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 restrict, or I should say, the the protective measures that schools have taken, schools have been are are not really a source of of spread. So I would, I would encourage us to maintain our language around requiring children to be masked while indoors. I know there are a number of changes in this order, including the, including the removal of outdoor masks. But I think maintaining the requirements indoors for everyone above the age of two remains remains important to preventing the spread in our local community. So I'll be asking for that amendment and for that language to be restored in the ordinance that we ultimately that we ultimately approved tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And that just jogged my recollection that I forgot to mention in the discussion. So the state is likely to devolve, as I mentioned, a number of the rules to the local areas, but the state is still talking about adding in some additional requirements around masking and students, particularly in school. So I think there will be a lot of confusion around the the kids and what they're supposed to do. And so I like your proposal. I think it adds a lot of clarity just to say, we're going to keep doing what we've been doing with the kids, with the youth in the community. They've been doing a great job. It is tremendous to see how many young people have stepped up. And we are so lucky to live in a community like ours that has done such a great job with that. And so I I really appreciate you bringing that forward. Do council members have questions or comments about any of the other measures about the estheticians and some of the other professions that have been added back in with our order here? Not seeing any, that'll take us over to our final round of public comments on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, this is your final chance. Our first commenter is Andy Clark.
Hi, can can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to say that I feel like our our town has done a great job of being safe and wearing masks and following, you know, the best guidance that's been offered up. And I hate wearing a mask as much as anybody else does when you're on a hike or you're working or, you know, trying to enjoy dinner somewhere in a in close quarters. But I think we need to keep doing it. And I think that But I think we need to keep doing it. And I think that, you know, regardless of state, what the state requires or doesn't require. But I can tell you that, you know, working with the public in multiple locations in the front range, you know, everybody is just ready to be done with this. Now the sunshine and the snow is melting. And, you know, people are getting kind of cavalier. Think you, you know, you don't know if somebody's an anti-masker or been vaccinated or had COVID or you don't know where they're coming from. There's clearly some pretty polarizing points of view around mask wearing. But people are just ready to break loose and the numbers are not pretty. And certainly not good enough to suggest that we abandon what seems to be one of the easiest things we can do to prevent the spread. So I say we keep our guard up, you know, for a while. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to comment on this agenda item? All right, coming back over to council, Councilmember Brown, do you have a proposal for us on how you'd want to frame the discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move the ordinance. What number are we up to now?
Eighteen oh five.
Eighteen oh five, okay. Ordinance eighteen oh five, series twenty twenty one. And I will go, and I will move it with the restoration of the sections related to children. I believe it's in section three, parts A and B. And so I would like to restore those as the, as my amendment to that ordinance. Thank you.
Is there a second just to frame the discussion? I'll second it to frame the discussion and we can have a substitute motion or other amendments or friendly amendments. Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I just want to, so clarification on, I, I would have seconded, but I had a clarifying question. So I'm gonna make sure I knew what I was talking about before. I'm like, yes, I'm in. So, you know, my, my understanding, Kyle, is that your, the outdoors still, okay, you're, you're saying, you know, we're not making a difference from Boulder County on outdoor, just on indoor for kids, ten, ten and below would still be like kink supers, for instance, kids would still be required to wear masks. I think I'm fine with that. I think, you know, the, the thing that is most important to me in this, after talking about, you know, safety is consistency. I mean, I've even, I've spoken to people today in my office, every Tuesday I give an update on COVID. And today, obviously, one of the updates was about masks. And there's just so, like, so many questions, like, well, so what does this mean for FC Boulder? What does this mean for their school? What does this mean? Like, but they're in Boulder County. If they're in Louisville, they're in Boulder County, but the rule hasn't changed in Louisville, but they're in Boulder County. See, I, right, but so, and so you can understand that when, when our rules are different, it's confusing. And so if it isn't really, really critical for us to have a different rule, in general, I think having the same rule as Boulder County is positive. And if I wholly disagreed with Boulder County's stance, then I would, I would probably feel differently. But where it, because I feel like there, it's very reasonable what's going on, science-based, and I, I would just default to have it be as similar as possible to Boulder County. So that there's a little, at least amount of confusion as possible. So I'm not sure how much we gain in making that small adjustment. But I'm actually not opposed to your adjustment, Councilmember Brown. I don't have a problem with it in and of itself. Just that I would, I'd probably tend towards just having the same as the county so that people know what they're doing.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Dickinson. I think part of the challenge of this pandemic has always been the patchwork of different responses in different communities and different states. You know, had we started this pandemic under, under different circumstances at the federal level, it might have been different. I don't know. But the, but, you know, so I, I agree with you really the, and I also would like to say that while I personally will continue to mask, while my little league team will continue to mask outdoors, you know, my kids and I will continue to mask. I think in this ordinance, I'm willing to, to, to be consistent with the state and the public health, the county public health guidance on masking outdoors. But I also think that I want to be consistent with the practice of our school districts and, and want to, to, to make sure that businesses like our grocery stores and patrons of them who, you know, feel comfortable when, you know, kids are brought into, into, into grocery stores and, and other indoor spaces. So, and I think being, having masks in those situations is, is important. So I think in this particular case, I think it's important that, that the same rules apply, especially as we're looking at the only population now that does not have a vaccine is, is children under 12. So.
Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. I, I just need a little bit of clarification. Well, let me first start by saying I, I, I would like to see as much consistency with the rest of the county and the state as we possibly can carve out. I think it's very confusing to people that, you know, when they just happen to cross a municipal line into another municipality, if there's a different set of standards or requirements. And, and I, I certainly do support masking and I do support masking certainly in businesses where, you know, the public comes to shop and I'm fine with that. I, I do have a question of Kathleen. I guess it's related to the school district. So are municipalities allowed to carve out their own requirements for publics, public and private schools? Or does the school district have some level of sovereignty or requirement to conform with the county and state measures?
City Attorney Kelly.
Sure. My understanding with regard to schools is the same as what the mayor referred to earlier is that they will be getting, you know, different guidance from CDPHE and the Department of Education. And I believe that masking will still be required based upon what I've heard in the schools. Certainly if the city's ordinance requires masking of children, if the language is restored, then the only children in Louisville who would be exempt are those under the age of two. Then that means that school-aged children that attend school in Louisville will be required to mask because that would be a public indoor space. And, you know, that would be the same requirement that has been in place. You know, the city of Louisville has had some discussions with, some of the schools had some discussions early on. And, you know, I guess my understanding is that those places, both public and private schools, have been in compliance with the masking order after we had those initial discussions about whether it applied to them or not.
So do you, do you think that the school district would have any concerns about us having our own restrictions? Or do they want to do something that's district-wide?
I would not be able to speak for any concerns the school district may have. I have not had any discussions with school district personnel.
So I think that, let me just see if Gloria is on. I know she's been talking to the school district. I know, I know staff members have been talking with the school district and they're planning on continuing masking. And they, you know, they will lift it outside, just like at recess and, and activities outside, just like the other actions. So I don't think we have any indication that the school district would be concerned with this. And I just remind everyone that the reason our measure has a different number in it in the first place is we went with the CDC number on age. And, and we tried to use the journals that were out at the time for who should have masks. And the county went with a number that was chosen through a number of forums. So we decided that our number, you know, followed the science on masks. Councilmember Brown?
The only, thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would add is that because our, our mask ordinance has always been different than the county's, it really wouldn't change much in terms of, in this particular case regarding the schools. And I think to, to the mayor's point, there's no indication that they will stop masking. But I'm, I think I'm, I'm, yeah, anyway, that's all.
I think, you know, to be fair, to the, the whole, there have been so many conversations about masks in the last year. And some excellent memes that have been generated out of all of the discussion around masks. But I think the place that, you know, there are some places where city staff will be impacted, depending which way we go here. So like the rec center, for example, has a lot of people in it between the ages of two and 10. And so, you know, do kids need to wear masks when they're working out in the rec center? Or if they're not swimming in the rec center, or if they're at the daycare at the rec center? So I mean, it's things like that that will have an impact on us. How about at the library during storytime when the kids are all sitting at storytime? Do they need to have their masks on? So I think it provides some clarity if we can just make sure we're super clear on this issue before we vote so that there's not, you know, waffling and revisiting in a week. There, there won't be a change needed in a week. Maybe we'll have to revisit our mask order in a month. Hopefully, if everybody gets vaccinated, if our numbers turn around and stop climbing back up in the yellow. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we will have to revisit it like in a month or so. But we don't want to have to revisit it next week or the following week because we didn't have a full discussion on this point. So are there any other top comments or, or discussion around it? All right. Is everyone clear about the motion that's on the table? Yes? All right. I will close the public hearing and ask for a roll call vote. Mayor Posman?
Yes. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Councilmember Lay indicated, yes, the thumbs up. I just wanted to make sure for, for the record. All right. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is the discussion direction of a disposable bag tax, the implementation and programming. We'll have a staff presentation this evening from Emily Hogan.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen for presentation. All right. Can you see that?
Um, now we can, yes. Thank you.
Fantastic. Okay. Well, staff is presenting the disposable bag tax implementation and programming for discussion and direction. In 2020, Louisville voters approved ballot question two A, which aims to reduce single-use bag consumption in the community by applying a 25 cent tax on every paper and plastic bag provided to customers by Louisville retailers. Retailers will retain 10 cents of the tax and remaining 15 cents will be remitted to the city to be used for administration of the tax and sustainability-related programs. The tax goes into effect on January 1st of 2022. Staff has estimated a few revenue scenarios based on the rate of behavior change we may see. As the rate of behavior change increases and the number of disposable bags is reduced, there will be less tax revenue. So in essence, the more successful we are, the less revenue we have to work with. A low behavior change rate of, you know, say 65% may result in $230,000 being remitted to the city annually. A moderate behavior change rate of 75% may result in $170,000 being remitted to the city. And a high behavior change of 85% may result in $100,000 being remitted to the city. Initial setup costs for implementation of the tax are estimated to be $50,000 in 2021, which would require a budget amendment. Funds would be used for staffing, software updates, and marketing and outreach. Annual expenses beyond 2021 are estimated to be around $70,000 per year. And there is an anticipated increase in cost due to a part-time position in finance that would be year-round. In 2021, this position is only anticipated for the fourth quarter, which is why you see a difference in cost from the first year versus later years. Staff estimates that around 270 businesses in Louisville will be responsible for collecting the tax. Staff has developed an outreach plan for businesses and residents, which is included as an attachment to staff's memo. Before the remaining revenue, staff evaluated a number of program options that are geared towards growing waste awareness, investment, and partnerships as the city continues to strive for zero waste and reduce single-use plastics within the community. And a lot of, you know, these priorities came from the Sustainability Action Plan as well as the Economic Vitality Strategic Plan. The staff has provided a menu of options for programming and potential scenarios based on the rate of behavior change that we may see. These are just a few examples of how revenue could be used. And staff's memo goes into greater detail on each of these program areas. So this A, B, and C lines up with those revenue scenarios that we saw earlier, that are also known as A, B, and C. Lastly, potential state legislation we're currently seeing may impact the city's tax. House Bill 21162 would require stores and retail food establishments to provide a single-use paper or plastic bag for a fee of 10 cents per bag between September 1st of this year and September 1st of 2022, or a higher fee adopted by the municipality in which the store is located. Businesses would be prohibited from providing plastic bags after September 1st of 2022, but could still provide recycled paper bags for a fee of 10 cents or higher if adopted by the municipality. The bill also prohibits styrene-to-go containers starting on January 1st of 2022. The bill has currently passed out of committee in the House and has moved to the House Appropriations Committee. It passed out of House Finance with a seven to four party line vote and appears to have broad support. If the bill is signed into law, the city's disposable bag tax would still apply to plastic and paper bags from January 1st of 2022 until September 1st of 2022, and then the paper bags afterwards. Staff expects to know more about the future of the bill by Mayor June of this year. We're closely following the bill and the additional revisions that we're seeing on a day-to-day basis. And we're working with legislative partners at CML and CC4CA, as well as the city attorney, to understand how the bill would interface with the city's tax. So staff provided an update to Finance Committee on March 15th, and the Finance Committee recommended moving forward with scenario C, which is a high behavior change. This plan for a higher reduction in disposable bags and less revenue, especially House Bill 21162, is signed into law. The Finance Committee also suggested revisiting the scenario and potential outcomes based on the outcome of the bill. The staff is seeking feedback on the following. Is there a specific goal the city aims to achieve through the tax that should be considered with programming? Are there different areas or programs that staff should focus on or research further? Are there any questions about first-year administration or marketing expenses and the proposed 2021 budget amendment? Are there any questions about the annual administration and marketing expenses beyond the first year? Are there any questions on potential legislation? And staff can always come back to Council Mayor June if there are any related bills signed into law for further discussion. With that, Katie Bond, Sustainability Coordinator, is here with me tonight. And we're happy to answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you, Emily. That'll take us to a public comment on this agenda item this evening. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item tonight, please raise your hand. All right. Seeing no comments on this agenda item, that takes us back over for council discussion. I really want to thank everyone and I'll turn it over to Mayor Proton Maloney in, in just a second here from the Finance Committee because I know they've worked on this. But I just wanted to sort of add my two cents at, at the onset, which, you know, is probably a bad idea, but I'm going to anyway. So I just, I feel very strongly that we should continue on with the voter-approved measure. It was a single-use bag tax, not a plastic bag tax. So, you know, to get the behavior change, to get people to choose to reuse. I'm, I'm very thankful that the staff have put in the packet information about targeting low-income families with resources like bags and things like that. And so I think we should carry on with the implementation. And there was a lot of information in the packet around what we could spend revenue on. I think we just need to frame that discussion in the context of the budget. So when we have the budgetary discussions, we can use this tax revenue that's generated in future years for whatever the highest priority sustainability actions are. They don't have to be waste-related or plastic bag-related because we asked the voters if they could be used on any sustainability project. So they could be used for carbon emission reductions, EV transition. So we need to have that discussion in more complete context of the entire budget and what the community's highest priorities are. So with that. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Mayor Proton Maloney to kick off the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So the, the Finance Committee uh, did discuss this, and um, I, I appreciate Emily, your presentation, and Katie, your work on this as well. And um, the last slide, which was a direction slide, had a number of questions there. And uh, before I get through sort of like answering those questions, because I, I think there's some context around these things is, you know, when we, as the city council, put this on um, the ballot, and I believe when people voted on it, it was really about waste reduction. It was about getting rid of plastic bags. Uh, my colleague Jeff Lipton has been talking about this for, since I've been on council, I think. So for the last five and a half years. And so, you know, I give him credit for us finally getting it to the ballot, and it really is about waste reduction. I mean, the first question, and I understand why it's the first question, but it's really, what do we do with the tax? And so, you know, to me, the taxes, that, that nuisance fee that we charge people when they go to a grocery store to get a bag, right? I mean, I, I went to Boulder the other day, and yeah, I, I didn't have a bag, and I had a bunch of little stuff, so I had to spend 10 cents to get a bag. So it was a nuisance fee I was willing to spend. Um, but anyway, as far as uh, the Finance Committee, we discussed the, the whole idea about what we expect to collect and so forth. And, you know, honestly, we don't know. And so for us to pick any of these three, uh, we really, uh, in my opinion, we really said, okay, we need to be, pick the most conservative and fiscal approach to this. And that was really the high, high behavior change, which I don't think is out of the realm of possibilities, given that I, and I'm sure, Mayor, you know the exact amount here. Probably 60-some percent, maybe close to 70% of the people who voted approved this. And so those are people who are already on board. Now that we have a nuisance tax, we could certainly go from 70 to 80%, maybe 90%. And so um, the high behavior change is something I think we need to be looking at there. And, and the mayor also, you know, mentioned a few areas that's going to be spent on. Uh, things that I mentioned in the Finance Committee meeting is, there, you know, we used to have cardboard recycling over off of Highway 42. Um, there, and you know, hard-to-recycle items. And, you know, I think we need to be looking at things that make an impact to the citizens of Louisville that people can participate in. And, and, you know, uh, given the COVID year, I'm sure we all have stacks of, of cardboard, for example. But the other thing I think is really important in this is what's going on with the state legislation and how does it impact us? And we're going to have a tough decision, depending on what gets, what gets passed, about what our program looks like. Uh, I don't think we want to make dupless in, in what we do, because really the goal is reducing waste. Um, and if there are no plastic bags, and, you know, maybe that eventually gets extended to paper bags. I think we've met the, the primary aim of this program, because it was never really about the, the financial aspect, but it's about really saving the planet. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
Um, yeah, not, not a ton to add. I appreciate your comments, uh, Mayor Proton. Um, I agree with everything, everything you just said, I think. Um, yeah, the, the goal is clearly reduction, right? And when we, we got a great um, pack of information, we went through this decision in the first place. And, and I think, you know, what, what we're aiming at is um, you know, a, a reduced usage of single-use bags. Um, and, and so, yeah, if, if they're, if, if things change and our revenue goes down because of it, that's great. And I, and I think kind of to the, the questions that were asked, um, you know, the, the thing that goes through my head is that I really want that campaign around the bag tax, of course, to be around bringing your own bags, that logo and, and the education. So there's educating the businesses, but definitely getting our residents prepared for, you know, it, it being a cultural thing here, that you, you do not show up to the store without, you know, without bags. Um, and so I, for me, that's a big part of the expense in this year, is marketing this as a community effort. It was passed on, you know, on a ballot, and people voted for it. And so getting people behind it and getting people excited about that idea, and having businesses be like, I just, we don't even need to order bags, like just, we're never using them. And, and that's really the goal, is that the bags just don't exist. Um, and that, and that everyone's using reusable bags on every single purchase. And I think, you know, I, it'll be, it'll be interesting. I had a, I had, um, I always bring reusable bags to King Supers when I shop there. And I was having like a panic day yesterday and went straight from work over there. I didn't have bags. I was on the phone. I couldn't do the self-checkout. I was just, it was a crazy moment, and I left the store with like seven plastic bags. And they, they bagged my meat separately, and then threw the ba- bag, another bag, another bag. And I got home, and my, my wife looked at me like I had just ruined the planet myself. So I think, you know, having, having that fee on there and really having to have a conversation about how many bags I'm willing to buy if I did forget a bag. And of course, when I do self-checkout and I make that mistake, I just put everything loose in my cart and had to take it out to my car loose. So I'm really excited to see the behavioral change when, when all of our residents um, have the same sort of uh, action put on them that, that I have put on in my house, so.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson and, and Mayor Proton Maloney. So um, it sounds like, so there was a question about if we needed this to come back to council after any related bills are signed into law. I think the answer is no. Um, I mean, the voters approved a single-use bag tax. It's not a plastic bag tax, and there will still be single-use bags. And so the implementation needs to carry on. Is there consensus around that idea? That, that, I mean, the staff needs to start working on this and um, implementing the will of the voters? Not seeing it. Some people's heads aren't moving at all, Mayor Proton Maloney.
I, you're seeing this more clearly than I am, apparently. I don't think we know what the bill is going to end up being. Um, it still hasn't gone to the floor, hasn't gone through reconciliation, it hasn't, you know. I, I don't, I don't know where it's going to end up, so it's hard to answer that. I, I think we have to ask the staff to be keeping, working down this path, because we have a mandate from the citizens who approve this. Um, but I think we need to, this needs to come back to us after assuming there's been legislation. Um, I think we need to have a discussion about reconciling what we do from here. And I guess I'm not prepared to agree with that at this point in time, until I have a better idea what the legislation might be.
So if we could have some more discussion around this point, and I'll just try to be more clear in my comments. Uh, and we may all disagree, and that's fine. And so that's why we just may need to have more discussion to figure out where we need to go. Um, but the state is considering a plastic bag ban and a polystyrene ban. So I don't think that there's any imaginable outcome where they'll consider banning paper bags uh, or other types of single-use bags. And they have not construed the definition of a plastic bag in the same way that we have with the thickness. Um, so I think in any outcome, there will still be single-use bags. And the campaign that was run around the bag tax was around choosing to reuse, that people would bring their own bags to the store rather than, you know, the, the signs said, "Paper, plastic, choose to reuse." Like, it was not just about plastic bags. Uh, and paper bags have a lot of issues, and reusable bags have a lot of issues if they aren't reused, you know. So we all have reusable bags, so we need to be reusing them lots and lots of times to make it worthwhile. Um, so that's where my comments are coming from, that, you know, the staff has a lot of work to do to getting this implemented by next year. And so I feel if you have clear direction tonight to them, that we're moving forward with the tax, then they can start the accounting software, the training, the postcards to businesses, the logos for the bags. They can start down the path, but if we wait, I just feel like it delays, from my perspective, what I'll be saying again, when we have the conversation again, even if they do pass the plastic tax. And so now we have some good discussion around this topic. That's excellent. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I uh, I think that, I think I want to agree with both Mayor, the Mayor Proton and yourself on this one. I know that sounds silly, but the, um, but I think that for me, I think what council, or maybe just the Finance Committee, probably just the Finance Committee might want to look at, is the impact of that legislation, in whatever form it takes, on the revenues that we would anticipate. Um, I think that's the impact. Like, I, I fully support, and I do not think that council needs to, to see anything related to like, do we go forward with implementing the tax that we passed? No, we have to implement it because we have it. There will continue to be paper bags, so we will need all kinds of, you know, implementation steps. Um, but the, the revenue adjustments may be the important thing um, that we, that we need to revisit, probably at least, probably at the Finance Committee, maybe, um, maybe the full council. But that, that, that would be my recommendation is, is if the, if the bill passes, then we sort of bring back and, and sort of uh, assess whether the revenue projections are still um, meaningful.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
Uh, yeah, I, I appreciate those comments, Councilmember Brown. I agree uh, entirely, Mayor, with your comments. Um, I think as far as the finance piece, you know, we decided in, in Finance Committee to uh, plan for the least amount of revenue, the highest amount of um, uh, change in behavior. So I think this, you know, were it to pass, I think this just puts us in that direction of highest behavior, which is already what we're planning for. And either, I mean, no matter what, we don't know. We don't, do not know what the income will be, and we never thought we'd know exactly what the income will be. So I think we'll be able to adjust. So I, I agree with Councilman Brown that we'll definitely need to adjust depending on what happens. But I agree with you that um, we need to be moving forward for implementation and, and marketing and all those things, regardless of what happens this fall, so we don't want to delay anything.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Um, I, 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 I'm feeling less disagreement than maybe is out there. You know, I, I think that what we know today, uh, we need to ask staff to keep moving ahead. What I'm suggesting is, once the bill has been passed, we don't know exactly what it's going to be. And so, uh, you know, if something does get passed, then I absolutely want to have another discussion about the, how does that um, affect or not affect our direction? So that's what I'm saying.
Do you think, and, and I'll ask you and City Manager Balsor both, if you think that committee can, that can be held through the Finance Committee? And then if the Finance Committee determines, you know, there's some policy decisions that need to be made, escalate, elevate it up? Or is that something we need to make time on a future agenda for?
Um, well, I, 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 I'm certainly willing to have the Finance Committee address this initially, um, like we did this particular previous discussion to this. So, um, and then we can propose anything. Um, so, I mean, that's myself, that's Counselor Dickinson and Counselor Brown. So I'm certainly willing to do that.
I just, and the reason I'm asking, and I'll turn it to City Manager Balsor to weigh in next, if she thinks the committee is a good place to field it, um, starters. It's just that I don't think the council should be coming up with the program and, you know, deciding on the logo of the bag and deciding on the postcards and weighing in on all those things. Like, we, we need to have our staff have the runway to be able to do all of that and get, get on with it.
And, and I don't want to do that either. I, I guess I'm really thinking more programmatically. Um, and, and I, it, it's just, uh, I don't have clarity. Maybe you have better clarity of my, what happened out of the, the House bill. Um, but I, I think it could go, could go any which way, and I just want us to be prepared. I do not want to stop what the staff is working on, because potentially nothing will get passed, and we have a mandate with what's been voted on. So I don't really think there's disagreement. It's just, we have a, maybe a slightly different view of what might happen, but we don't know what will happen.
Thank you, City Manager Balsor.
Yeah, I guess I would ask Emily, I mean, I think the direction is clear, and, you know, obviously based on the most conservative estimates. And I think certainly we can go back to Finance Committee after the legislation and talk about what impacts that might have on finances or other things like that. And also ultimately, you'll see it um, in a budget amendment, um, likely in June 2, um, or, or through a budget, and through ultimately the 22 budget discussion as well. So I think there'll be lots of opportunities. But yeah, I think the most important thing is the direction to, to go forward at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this topic from members? Emily and Katie, I just would like to give you a chance to say, you know, are there areas where you think you need more clarification on the policy?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't think so. Really, the only question I have is, you know, staff is prepared to keep moving forward with our marketing and outreach. I think the question is, are we ready for that to go out the door to businesses before resolution of the House bill?
Any council discussion around that question? Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I think that it should go out to businesses as soon as it's put together to give them time to prepare and decide how they're going to handle it financially, and are they going to uh, use some kind of alternative for the bags?
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I'd agree with Councilmember Fahey on that. I think, I think sooner, more notice is better. And if it changes, or we need to change the program in some meaningful way after the, the, the passage of the bill, we can discuss that. But I think, I think now is, now is a good time, so.
Thank you, City Manager Balsor.
Yeah, so thanks. I appreciate this conversation. So the one thing that I'm thinking that may, so I'm not, again, I don't know all the specifics of the bill, but I, I think that the issue too is if, based on what happens at the state level, then how does that affect our collection and our uh, sales tax and that? And how that um, is conveyed to the businesses? So that might be the piece that we're still, uh, we're hesitant to, to share with folks, because we're waiting to understand what that administration will look like. So, um, so there may be some pieces that we can start to get out, but there may be some pieces that we choose to wait on based on how that works with our administration. So I think just a direction to move to, to forward to the extent that we can, recognizing there's going to be some limitations potentially.
That's great. Thank you, thank you, City Manager Balsor. So you'll, you know, you all will work out with your best judgment, you know, which pieces can be rolled out, which pieces need to be delayed, and how to communicate the best um, m- most up-to-date information that you guys can.
Yes, that's correct, and what the best timing may be.
Great. That sounds fantastic. And so the council will, will move forward with these policy uh, positions in place. And then the Finance Committee will do the heavy lifting for us, uh, as things continue to change on this topic. Does that make sense to everybody? Great. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, that takes us to ordinance number 1806, series 2021, an ordinance approving the vacation of a 53.56-foot-long portion of a five-foot-wide utility easement on lots 22, 23, and 24, except the east three and one and a half feet of Lot 22, Block 6, Jefferson Place, 701 Pine Street. This is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve that ordinance on first reading and set the public hearing for April 20th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to ordinance number 1807, series 2021, an ordinance amending chapter 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code concerning building height calculations. Uh, that ordinance, and this is our first reading, and we will set the public hearing for the 4th of May, 2021. Is there a motion to that effect?
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. We set those public hearings, and that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. That takes us to our council comments committee reports and identification of future agenda items. And our Economic Vitality Committee?
Um, sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm unmuted. Great. Just trying to unmute. Um, I have nothing to report, no.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
No report.
Utility Committee?
No report.
Uh, can Colorado Communities for Climate Action?
Uh, just to report that there are probably 12 to 15 bills that are going through the process right now that we're currently working on. One of them is the plastic ban, uh, the plastic bag ban. Um, and so we're just plugging along, trying to get it through.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. I hope you're successful. That would be so cool. Keep working at that. Commuting Solutions?
Yes, there was a membership meeting this morning, which was, um, I, you know, I'm accustomed to saying that pretty much the word is, we have too many transportation needs and no money. Um, but something has clearly happened since then. Um, and we've, at this point, there's um, you know, and the federal level, there's an awful lot going on, and Colorado is likely to get a big share of new transportation money. There's, it, it's clear from Senator Winter, uh, who spoke with- who spoke this morning, and is carrying a big transportation funding bill, which will be probably out next week, that, you know, they're really looking for something that's more sustainable, sustainable kind of funding for at least a period of time. And I think there'll be some good, you know, continued good news. I, I can't believe it when we see all the money. It's supposed to be coming into Colorado for transportation projects, but there's a lot of interesting things going on. One of them strikes me as, you know, Amtrak interest in the Front Range, which was a concern that somehow the rail along the Front Range would siphon off a bunch of funds that we might otherwise be able to get to use for heavy rail or, or other projects in our neck of the woods. And if, you know, if funding for Amtrak actually gets used to help develop that corridor, that may be a source of funding, which will take some pressure off of us. And, you know, I am continually, continually appreciative of Lynn Geisinger, who is our rep on the RTD Board. I think she's continuing the hard fight of trying to keep rail for, you know, Northwest Rail in front of RTD and remind them that we're all taxpayers up here. And I, she works, you know, I, all of, I, I think the mayor is on a couple of groups, in a couple of groups with her. And, I mean, there's a lot of people who are pulling the oars very hard on, on that. But one of the things that struck me, too, was a comment just in one of the RTD presentations this morning that, or, and, and I think it was hers, actually, it was hers, where she, she talked about the executive directors wanting to have more, I think she called it writer shed? Writer shed. I've never heard that word until today. Like watershed, except writer shed. Anyway, writer shed areas around the metro area, having a little more contact with local communities. Gee, that would be really nice. And probably would support their people in the field a little bit better on, frankly, issues like the one we dealt with today about the bus. I think that to the extent there might be an ongoing relationship that might be developed through that, I think that's a really kind of positive. Something very positive coming out of RTD. We'll see if it happens. But anyway, there's, there's money that is coming. And there, of course, are a lot of people who are looking to get their hands on it. So anyway, there's just a whole bunch of different folks talking about those general areas. But a lot of it is still very new and to be worked out in the details.
Thank you. Consortium of Cities?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a meeting tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, where we will discuss what our natural disaster prepared us for.
Thank you. Street Fair?
Street, uh, Street Fair Committee actually met this afternoon. They're working, continuing to work on a plan with very imperfect information that will be consistent with the requirements of the state and the county, which are evolving. So the, you know, some of the conclusions is Street Fair would not start, I think, until July 23rd, run through Labor Day. And it's going to be greatly limited in terms of the number of people who could attend. I think they're planning now for attendance of less than a thousand people per event. And with, you know, with the overall goal, goal of trying to bring some people into downtown and reactivate the downtown, they're just starting to contact bans, and that actually has had a pretty good reception with several potential bans for summer. And they have to go hard on deposits by around June 1st. So, you know, continuing planning for two more months and then, you know, actually having to lay out some money and make some financial commitments. The ban budget will be considerably less than what they have spent in the past trying to scale it more to the attendance that would likely be permitted. So anyway, I think they're doing a, a very good job with the information that's available, and it's going to continue to evolve as more information flows in, and we have a better understanding of where we're going to be, you know, by the end of July. Thanks.
Thank you. Denver Regional Council of Governments, I'll combine that in the Metro Mayor's Caucus update. So Denver Regional Council of Governments is working on approving the MVRTP, Metrovision Regional Transportation Plan. And that's a critically important piece that if we don't have that in place, we can't get all that federal funding that Councilmember Lee talked about. So we'll keep working on that. And also, the transportation bill is going to be coming before that, both groups for, for discussion. And so our local policy just says, you know, we're supportive of new transportation funding. And I think it's going to be pretty nuanced around whether or not, you know, how, how the discussion goes on whether or not we come on the support or oppose side. It's really very complicated. So like at Metro, at the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, the staff looked at it, and their evaluation was that we should support it. But at the same time, when I looked at it, you know, our Metro Mayor, our Mayors and Commissioners Coalition position suggests that we should have 30% for multimodal. This bill doesn't do that. And it has a number of other problems too that Metro Mayor's Caucus has identified. So Metro Mayor's Caucus, I told you all about this before, and I'll just try to briefly reiterate what I told you before, has really been looking at how much our area puts in versus how much we get back. So, you know, if our area puts in a dollar of fees, we only get about 60 cents back. And other areas put in a dollar of fees and get over $2 back. And so we recognize the need for the urban area to pay for things in the rural areas because of our reliance on agriculture and, you know, transport, transporting goods and just that we need a statewide solution. But only getting 60% back led for our area to be in a straight state of great disrepair at a time when we're growing very quickly. We have, you know, bridges that are crumbling, concrete is literally falling off bridges on I-70. We're not able to provide the transit solutions people are asking for. We're not allowed, we're not able to provide any of the types of projects people are asking for. A very small, limited amount is what we can do. So we were trying to get a bigger share back into the urban area for this new funding, and the state didn't entertain any of that that we suggested. So that'll be nuanced to see if we can push on that a bit more and get a bit more back for the urban areas. It also, you know, that they had really, Faith and Matt had really talked about future-proofing this revenue. And so a lot of us thought they were going to look at using VMT as a method of doing that. Right now, we rely heavily on a gas tax, and unfortunately, the new fees that they've put forward also rely heavily on gas. So it's really not future-proof. Like, we all have heard the announcements from the electric vehicle manufacturers that we're going to be 100% electric vehicles being sold by 2035. So to put all of the eggs in the gas basket to use, the majority of the funding comes through an eight cents fuel fee. And it starts out lower than that, but it escalates up to eight cents. It doesn't really future-proof it, so that'll be an item of contention. There's already contentious discussion around whether EVs are paying their fair share of maintenance on the roads. And that's a big, at Dr. Cog, it's all bipartisan, right? There's no parties. Everyone's supposed to be totally independent, but you can kind of tell who's more conservative and who's more liberal. And that's already been drawn as a line in the sand, as a fight, you know, whether or not EVs are paying enough for their fair share of wear and tear on the roads, and whether or not this bill addresses that. And then, of course, the elephant in the room is the way that it's been structured around fees. And we always have these fun conversations around fees because of Bloomby City of Fort Collins and because of Colorado Bridge Enterprise versus Taper Foundation, and these other case law that's been set for us around what's a fee and what's a tax. And of course, the, the legislators have tried to follow all the laws, as, as we all have taken an oath of office to follow all the laws. There will be a lot of debate around whether or not these are fees or taxes. And frankly, they flow through the exact same funding formula as the general gas tax does. They're planning on mixing it in the general fund with other general taxes, and then they're planning on distributing it out through the same formula that follows other general taxes through the Highway User Tax Fund. So I think there will be some pretty strong arguments against the fact that these are not fees, that they're taxes. And so we'll just, it, it's going to be one of these things where, where it's a hot potato and a live debate the whole way through, and I'll do the best I can representing us. It's going to be changing by the minute, and I think our best bet is to try to push to get more in there for multimodal, more in there for the urban area, so that projects like our projects can get funded and that we can do our best to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and try to come up with some long-term transportation funding. So I will do my best, and if you have any questions, please do let me know. I'm happy to go into it in more detail. Joint Interest Committee Superior in Lafayette.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a meeting tomorrow with Superior.
Fantastic. Mayors and Commissioners Coalition. I don't believe I have talked to you since we did our annual DC lobbying trip. And so I just first want to say, we didn't go to DC because of COVID, but we met with all the same people we always meet with, and we did it all virtually. And we tried to be as upbeat and fun and exciting as we always are in person, and it was really hard because it was over the computer. But I want to put out a special thanks to Megan Davis. She just does such a good job advocating for our community, ensuring that we're in all the right meetings with all the right people, ensuring that we have all the right talking points so that we can ask just the right questions. So we met with Amtrak's Government Affairs people to try to make sure they knew how excited we were for the alignment of Northwest Rail, Front Range Passenger Rail. We met with FHWA and FRA and all of the right people to talk about what they're planning and ask them all the questions about how do we need to outline our applications to have the best chance of getting federal funding for our communities. So thank you to Megan Davis. I think it went off pretty well, but we'll know for sure if we see any of the money. That's the measure of success. So we'll see on that. And then I did give the Metro Mayor's Caucus update, but I just wanted to add one more thing about the police reform bill, just to make sure everyone knew what was going on there. So there's a policing bill that's out right now that all of the chiefs of police have taken a position against the Chief of Police Association. The bill was really intended to reduce jail population, so there's not, you know, people in jail who don't need to be, which is an excellent effort. And I think many of us could get behind it, but the way that it's been approached creates some real problems for victims being able to get into court and for people who are at risk of being revictimised from pretty serious crimes. So there was a very tight turnaround on a Metro Mayor's Caucus vote to write a letter opposing it, just the way, not opposing the idea of reforming jails and ensuring that people aren't incarcerated needlessly, but just saying that the way that this has been gone about, it just doesn't protect public safety and it doesn't protect victims. And Boulder's mayor called me and asked me to sign on, and Westminster's mayor called me to ask and sign on, and it's kind of one of those, when you get asked by those two, it's kind of opposite or polarizing viewpoints. So they raised the concerns, and I talked with our police chief, and I had to make a decision on a very tight turnaround to support the Metro Mayor's Caucus letter of opposition. But in the end, it wouldn't have mattered if I opposed it. The majority of mayors both signed on, and it just takes a simple majority at this point. But we did take that position as Metro Mayor's Caucus, and I wanted to let you all know about that. And there's one other bill in testifying on this week, which is demand-side management on gas. And so Tracy Burnett, our representative, is sponsoring the bill, and it is to give the Public Utility Commission more tools similar to what our water utility has, where the, where the energy companies can use revenue to pay for things on demand-side management, like more efficient appliances, like insulation, like apps, so that people can monitor their usage and use less. So like, we do that today on water. We buy those slow-the-flow kits for the rachios, and we give them out. We do the Water Wise with the gardens. We do the, we do all, the toilets that don't use as much water. So they'd like to do those same kinds of things, but for the gas sector. And so that bill will be coming later this week if anybody else would like to testify. And that is my update. Revitalisation Commission?
No report.
Rocky Mountain Metro Airport Roundtable?
No report.
All right. Thank you. I did just want to say on that Rocky Mountain update that the maps that we, we heard about a little bit earlier this evening, we, we do have time data, elevation data, and all of those things. I might be happy to get them to Brad. And so maybe I'll shoot him an email if that's okay with everybody. So he has the full info on those maps. Great. Excel Energy Futures?
No report.
Thank you. Advanced Agenda Topics? City Manager Balsor, I am so sorry. I feel like I was supposed to bring something up under Advanced Agenda Topics, and I just, I don't have anything in my notes.
No, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, you're good.
Anyone else have items for the Advanced Agenda they need to bring up? All right. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Bye.